Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting this June 11th, 2024. I'm pleased today that we have Pastor Shel Osmond of Life Church of Smyrna Assembly of God. He will be providing our invocation. That will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Officer Hecksher. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge. And Pastor, please join us.
Good morning, Miss Cupid and Commissioners. Thank you so much for your service to this great community. If you'd like to, I'll invite you to join with me for a moment in prayer. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for another day. We're thankful, Lord, for this beautiful opportunity to gather together. Thank you, Lord, for those who are leading our county and making strategic decisions. Lord, we would certainly ask very humbly that you would guide those decisions. Lord, for all of those who are going to be speaking today, we pray that you would give them grace and give them the ability, Lord, to articulate their views. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to hear even opposing views. And somehow through it all, Lord, may every decision that's made be made for your glory and certainly for the betterment of this community. And Father, while someone else might offer their prayer in another name, I'm so honored today that I can offer my prayer in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Osmond, for that invocation. Truly appreciate it. And thank you, Officer Hecksher. Our meeting is now called to order. All right, we have one presentation today, and that will be brought by Commissioner Gambrell. For those of you who are here with respect to Elder Abuse Awareness Day, please join her up front.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us today. It is with great honor that I give this proclamation. Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital members of our communities. And whereas, as our population lives longer, this gives us an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a nation. Ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And whereas, elder abuse can be physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, exploitation, emotional abuse, abandonment, or self-neglect. Some warning signs are bruises, broken bones, and burns, unexplained withdrawal from normal activities, and unusual depression or anxiety. There could be sudden changes in financial situations, bed sores, poor hygiene, and unusual weight loss, as well as strained or tense relationships in fear of family members, friends, or caregivers. And whereas, it is up to all of us to ensure that social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, thereby reducing the likelihood of abuse. Preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving supports like senior centers, human services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the betterment of our community. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June 15th, 2020-24 as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Cobb County. We encourage everyone to commit to building a safer community for our older residents and honoring elder adults this 11th day of June 2024.
We want to thank the board for this proclamation and just thank our Department of Senior Services for all the work that they do for our seniors. As we all know, getting old is a privilege that's denied to many of us. So it's all for us to make sure that we do what we need to do to protect those who are in their elder ages and do right by them, so that way those who come behind us will do right by us. So thank you once again for the proclamation.
All right, we are now at our next tab, which is a public hearing tab, which will be brought by our Department of Transportation.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. The department does have one public hearing for your consideration this morning. By way of introduction, and note this item is related to the project funded in the FY24 budget and is unrelated to items related to the MSBLOST later in the packet and the regular agenda. By way of background, Cobb County is a recipient of Federal Transit Administration funding assistance through an annual formula allocation, as well as through various discretionary and competitive funding programs. As a recipient of federal funding, Cobb County and Cobb Link must comply with Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and related statutes and regulations that require no person in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefit of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal aid. The proposed Cobb Link microtransit pilot project will include curb-to-curb service within the South Cobb recommended area and will connect to other transit services in South Cobb County and the Atlanta region. During the initial two-year pilot operation, the project will be closely monitored and evaluated by Cobb Link and Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority. Based on selected key performance indicators and successful evaluation, a 30-year funding may be authorized by the ATL. In consideration of the proposed microtransit pilot project, the service areas for the current flex zones in South Cobb will increase and adopt the current Cobb Link fair structure. These proposed changes warrant the need for a service and fair equity analysis to include assessment of potential negative impacts on various demographics and mitigation efforts to minimize impacts. Once completed, per Cobb Link's recent Title VI program update, a public hearing is required, as well as a minimum 30-day public comment period. The final assessment will include a summary of findings from the public comment period and the public hearing. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for completion of the service and fair equity analysis for the proposed Cobb Link microtransit pilot project in South Cobb County.
Thank you, Drew. As was shared, this is a public hearing with respect to microtransit, which was approved in our prior budget. We will take an unlimited number of speakers to participate in public comment. You'll have a maximum of three minutes to address the board. With that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for any speakers.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Craig Harflet. And I've sent you a lot of stuff in the last two weeks, a lot. The world's on fire. We keep poking the bear and the dragon. And everything in Cobb County look like, I think you're in a bubble. I think you all just are thinking, oh, we got our little thing and everything's gonna be fine. But it's not. I mean, de-dollarization, the budget, the federal budget. You know, they keep the rates high. Can't even service a debt at 7%.
Mr. Harford, let me remind you.
But here's the thing, you want a grant, and the grant is federal money. It's Cobb County money. And you're not looking, you're not adapting to the current situation that's going on in the world and in Cobb County and in the federal government. You're thinking that, oh, we can do something and plan for 30 years and do this and that. But you can't.
Mr. Harford, this public hearing is not with respect to MSBLOST.
Well, I'm saying you should not do microtransit for these reasons.
Okay, thank you.
And please quit interrupting me because I know how to make a point.
I just want to make sure you are complying with our policy with respect to speaking, with respect to the item at hand.
I can't hear what you're saying. It's not clear.
Okay, I need for you to constrain your comments to the topic at hand.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're gonna spend money that we don't even know if we'll have in the future on a pilot program funded by a source that's in dubious straits. So you should cancel this. Don't do it. Put it on the shelf. Wait and see what happens the rest of this year. You may not have, your whole plan may be up in smoke, and why would you spend money when we're going into a real crunch? And that is the whole point, is that look around you. And it's the Bob Dylan song, basically. Look around. You know, if you don't start swimming, you're gonna sink like a stone for the times they are a-changing. Thank you.
We will now take the next speaker and just be reminded that the comments are with respect to the proposed Cobb Link microtransit pilot project in South Cobb, which is outside of the 30-year MSBLOST.
Right. Hi, my name's Robin Moody. I'm from Marietta. George has lived here in Cobb County since 2002. And I just wanted to share some things about Cobb County and how we are built. We are very different in that, basically, if you took a white paper towel and poured Kool-Aid on it, that's, we're just so spread out. So to look at something like public transit does not make sense. Financially speaking, Cobb County has been known for several things, and lots of people moved here for that. That would be low taxes. I'll say that one more time. We used to be known for low taxes and suburban life and lots of trees and low-density growth. And that is why a lot of people have moved to Cobb County and have built their lives here. I would like to share, from 2013 to 2022, Cobb Link's annual ridership has declined from 3.7 million trips to fewer than a million. I'm gonna read those out to you. In 2013, we had 3,687,025. 2014, we had 3,555,743. 2015, we had 3,327,494. In 2016, we had 2,2,921,517. 2019, 2,485,506. And here's where it gets fun. In 2020, it went down to... In 2020, it went down to 1,779,703. And in 2022, we had an amazing 993,547 trips. So I would say that public transit in Cobb County keeps declining, and I don't see how funding more transit is going to make a difference. I know lots of people, and they don't use the routes that are suggested because we are, like I said, you take a white napkin and you pour Kool-Aid all over it, and we're all spread out. Cobb County is not built for public transit. If that was something that was a good idea when we built the city like a long time ago, someplace like, you know, Utah where things are built on a square, that might make sense. But that's just not who we are, as I understand. We were built by like cattle lanes, and people followed that to build roads. Like if you drive around, the road changes names three to four times and directions. We're just so good at that. So I really fail to see how putting on my children and my grandchildren this new tax and any of these new ideas for microtransit. Thank you very much.
My name is Pamela Riordan, and I live in East Cobb. I'm also a part of an organization in Mableton, and I understand the needs of the people all across Cobb County. I have been canvassing all over, and let me tell you what the concerns are. They are not microtransit. Microtransit has already been tried in this county. And I know I attended a meeting of the transit where the chair wanted the mayors to come and accept her 30-year plan. They did not want to accept that because they want to have their own. So the answer back is, but, microtransit. We're going to cover the cities that way. Folks, it's already been tried. It's already failed. And the answers from the citizens will show you a big no in November on this tax. But in the meantime, putting the cart before the horse is like saying, oh, but we're going to shove it down your throats because we're going to do this microtransit again in South Cobb, particularly, I think, Mableton, if I understand it. And we're going to make it work. We're going to make it work because that is what the three out of five on this board do because they have a D after their name. We will increase taxes. We will make it work even though people don't want it. You know what people want? Citizens, senior citizens, I've talked to them. They want to expand the services that the senior citizens have now using microtransit. That model works. Your model proposed does not work. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take the next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeremy McCowen, West Cobb. I'm here to speak on microtransit as it pertains to West Cobb. I'm going to mention a couple things just beforehand. Please follow me just through them. If I get off, you can interrupt me. I feel generally unrepresented. When I first emailed this commission and when I started attending these meetings, it was because I'd emailed you, Ms. Cupid, and you helped me to understand more the tax assessor's office, navigate those waters. I had them come out to my house, evaluate things. But ultimately, it resulted in what we already knew at the very beginning was going to be the outcome, and it died in the water. I started showing up to the meetings the very first time I was here. I asked for representation. You guys listened to me. I didn't feel the results of that. When I returned again, there was a lot of people here speaking about property taxes. You, Ms. Cupid, asked for dissenting opinions to approach afterwards. I approached. I gave my phone number. Nothing came of that. I'm here again to represent what I feel is an uneven, an unequal, an inequitable distribution of services to West Cobb. This is a situation where we continue to receive very little representation from this board. Ms. Gambril responds very quickly to me, has met me several times about these issues, but is very clearly outvoted every single time. There are places where we are just getting sidewalks and light posts and very basic services, and yet, we're a pretty substantial portion of the tax base. And when I hear things like this microtransit, all I can see is, once again, no one thinking about us, no one taking the time to apply those resources in a fair and equitable way. It's not fair. It's not a good distribution. You're not spending the time to think about all of the people in Cobb County. You're targeting very specific people who already receive the lion's share of the resources by a large margin. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Segal. I live in Dexter 41 in West Cobb. I've lived in the county for more than 30 years, pretty much all over the county. And I currently serve on the Transit Advisory Board, and I'm also a proud advocate for better mobility here in this county. Yeah, I was one of very few people, I feel like, to attend the open public houses, and I thank the staff for taking the time and answering all the detailed questions that I had for them. This public hearing is specific to the topic of the service and fair equity analysis for the microtransit pilot in South Cobb, and I'll try to keep my comments specific to that agenda topic as presented. As someone who originally was against the concept of microtransit, I thought it's just not scalable, you know, possibly, but I must say that the success of the MARTA REACH Pilot Program has truly changed my mind. But it has also made clear that there is a difference between running a microtransit service that is successful and one that fails. It was very clear that microtransit can serve its residents in two very specific ways. Number one, it can provide transportation access and connectivity within one's local neighborhood. Number two, it can provide reliable and safe last-mile access to fixed transit routes for local and regional connections. Both of these will be greatly beneficial to the residents it serves, and I look forward to seeing it being implemented for the first time here in Cobb County. Regarding the service and equity of the proposed pilot, I do want to take a step back and ask one simple question. What is success? Recently at the TAB Board, we had a great discussion where we asked ourselves that same very question. There are a lot of wide and varied opinions on that topic, but to me, our goal should be clear. The more riders we serve, the greater impact we have. To achieve this goal and provide a greater level of service, I believe we need to have a very clear set of ridership goals and a marketing outreach communication and ridership engagement plan to achieve it. The success of this pilot will lay the groundwork for a successful rollout of microtransit service to the remainder of the county, and it will transform the mobility for everyone in this county as it expands. Let's make it happen.
Christine Rosman. I just wanted to say that with the microtransit, is it really for Cobb? Is it really for, or is it because of the ARC? And that's what the ARC would like, and you're following what they want? Because at this juncture, doesn't seem like it's real feasible, and that might be misuse of funding, of taxpayer dollars. And what we're looking for is full representation, not dictatorship, not telling us what we need, okay? And to actually quote our county manager, is, we don't trust you because you're not putting our needs ahead of your needs or ahead of the ARC's needs. And the ARC is the one that's driving this bus, I believe. And I also believe that, Chairwoman, that you are on the Transportation Committee for the ARC. And I'm sure that doesn't influence at all this whole, I want to say debacle, I don't know if that's the right word, but it's the misrepresentation of Cobb citizens. So thank you so much.
Kevin Cutliffe, District 2. I'm that local hippie that you always see. So I actually just have a bunch of notes here. It's going to be kind of a random things, but all pertains to microtransit in general. So I've talked about my e-bike usage and how I get around the county, but of course, I had a flat last month, and I also had lots of cons down in Atlanta, so I had to use the bus a lot. As an East Cobb resident, I had to use Uber and Lyft to get to these buses to make sure I could get down to Atlanta or take the 5015 over to Marietta Square. So far this year, after my flat, big storms that we've had, I've spent $765 on Lyft. So one of the things we need to make sure is that our microtransit program costs the same as a bus ticket, $2.50. We really do need that, you know? And buses run from like 5:00 AM to around, and I know the 10, I've taken it before from Atlanta, the last bus arrives at the Marietta Transfer Station around 1:00 AM. So we need to make sure that these microtransit runs from around 4:30 to 1:30 AM, just to make sure that that last connectivity is very important because we don't want people to be stranded at their stations. That's, you know, waiting for a Lyft at 1:00 AM at the Marietta Transfer Station is very lonely and very sad. So, but we also need to support small and foldable bikes and strollers onboard. It shouldn't be forced to share space with wheelchairs and people with disabilities. We could also provide a co-incentive for bike-sharing programs to go between these two. With billions planned by GDOT to use our tax dollars for highway corridors, we do need to make sure our microtransit goes on these toll lanes as well, just like our buses do. And finally, let's talk about the pilot program. The zone that needs to be considered needs to not be randomly drawn. We need to focus on high-use areas, but also focus on areas that are not touched by buses at all. You know, if we focus on corridors that have high ridership, we are defeating the point. It's the same as our buses. You know, as an East Cobb resident...
Excuse me, let's go ahead and just pause for a moment. I'm hearing a lot of chatter in the audience that makes it difficult to hear the speaker. Just ask that we tone that down, please, and provide some courtesy to our speaker. Thank you.
That's fine. I totally get it. But you know, like, microtransit is supposed to be the B to C after the A to B. So I agree that the previous speaker, West Cobb is very underrepresented, East Cobb is very underrepresented by our transit. So I hopefully, if this South Cobb microtransit pilot is a success, we can focus on our underrepresented areas in West and East Cobb as well. Thank you so much.
My name is Robbie Huck. I live in Marietta, and I just want to be one simple voice for the free market. Free market, it solves individuals' problems in an efficient and effective way. I'd like, please, I know we're not supposed to ask questions, but if you could, give an example where the government solves anybody's problems in an efficient and effective way that might be beneficial to everyone, because I don't believe it exists. But anyway, I applaud you trying, but shrink the government, that's the solution. Thanks.
Again, this is for the public hearing regarding the South Cobb microtransit pilot. Okay, not seeing any. We'll have our director approach. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Drew regarding this public hearing?
I don't have any questions for Drew, but for the purpose of those that may be in the audience or joining us by video, if you can just walk us through a little bit about the plan itself, this particular agenda item, and the boundaries. It was a comment made earlier about it being randomly drawn. So if you can just address that and just the overall project.
Sure. There's currently three different flex zones in the South Cobb area where there used to be transit service, and those flex zones are very linear. And what those zones allow is for someone to pre-schedule a trip, a trip that costs $2.50, to come to a central transfer point, to then be able to take a second flex zone or a fixed route service to be able to get to their final destination. But what we have found is that that design is relatively inefficient because those flex zones are very, like I said, linear in nature, and despite their close proximity, do not overlap, and it requires that transfer of trip to be able to get to a destination that is not very far away. And so what we have seen in various pilots and programs throughout the nation and in the state in particular with MARTA and Hall County and others, is the use of these microtransit zones, which are distinct areas that provide not just a curb-to-fixed transfer, but a curb-to-curb total trip. So where someone may be going to a medical appointment and had to make one or more transfers, this would provide them a trip from their home or their work to that final destination in a one-seat trip methodology. So this particular item, though, is, as FTA recipients, anytime we make a fair structure or a system change, there's a public hearing required to make sure that all are well aware of what is proposed and what the fair structure is. The proposal for that zone, kind of going from those three flag-shaped zones to one overall encompassing area, that is, I'd be glad to provide a map to the board and post that on our website, would be that the fare and the hours remain consistent. The fare is $2.50 per person per trip, and the hours run from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and that throughout the, in particular, because this is a new service offering, very early in that service offering and throughout, that staff would closely monitor that for the participation, for the ridership, for any opportunities to improve it, any opportunities to capitalize on anything else that we learned from that initial experience.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gambril.
Drew, I just have a follow-up for clarification purposes.
Of course.
You said it was $2.50 per trip. Is that a one-way trip, roundway trip? Is it for each leg of your trip? Can you clarify that further, please?
One-way trip.
So using your example, if microtransit took someone to a station, that's $2.50. If they went from that bus station to another micro, another location that would require microtransit, that would be another $2.50?
So thank you for the follow-up. I'll clarify. The $2.50 trip is curb-to-curb within that zone, but allows for a free transfer to fixed transit. So it would be a $2.50 fare to their end destination. Under this proposal and what we're budgeted for, there is only one microtransit zone, so it would not be a microtransit to fix to microtransit. It would only be a curb-to-curb trip within that microtransit zone or a curb-to-fix transfer to their final destination.
And given the completion of this analysis, what kind of information should we expect to see interpreted?
In terms of this public hearing and the subsequent comment period, it's simply a summary of comments received.
Okay, all right. So will there be any kind of like facts or figures that we can glean over, like usage?
Oh, once it's implemented, absolutely. We'll provide regular updates to the board and the public on the operations of the system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Drew. My issue with this, first of all, is we're spending money on transit for microtransit or pilot program in a specific area when we know further down in the agenda, we're voting on the MSPLS referendum. So I can't see spending more money on transit when it's part of the overall MSPLS project that will be, most likely be a referendum in November for the voters to decide.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Just to reiterate, we currently have this system in place, but it's kind of in a spoke-and-hub system, which has been quite inefficient. We've heard... We've heard from our mayors in the South Cobb area and from a number of residents their desire to be included in flex. We've also heard from some of our nonprofit and religious organizations about the challenges a number of residents have had in this area to get to work and to other, um, locations. This is why this was moved forward, because of the timeliness of it. If you don't have an ability to get to work or to school or to a hospital system, saying transit may come next year or when we vote on it November doesn't he, doesn't help you on that trip you need to take tomorrow. This is the quickest way that we can do it, even though we voted on last year's budget, because there is a process that we do have to follow. But this is being responsive to the needs of residents in Cobb County. That is the sole agenda that's driving this agenda item. There is opportunity for microtransit to be expanded throughout the entire county should our referendum be successful on the November ballot. But that is for the voters to decide, and that is a separate matter. This is addressing a current need. And Commissioner Sheffield, I want you to know that you have my support for this agenda item. And the residents that have asked for this and the mayors that have asked for this, you also have my support for this agenda item.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, Drew, everything that you've done in working on this project. And just to kind of echo some of the chair's point, you know, making these decisions, you know, it seems easy, or some believe that these decisions come easy. But when we hear or I receive emails from a constituent that she missed her dialysis appointment because of transportation, or she cannot reach, um, or make her doctor's appointments, it's very disheartening. And these are, excuse me...
Excuse me, we are not asking for a conversation with those in the audience. You are audible up here, and it is distracting, and it is also discourteous.
Especially when we are silent when everyone else speaks. But, um, but anyhow, Drew, um, just thank you. I appreciate your support, um, in, in moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing for clarification. This pilot, it, it's a, it's not just a pilot for, um, the South Cobb area. It's a pilot for the model itself in using the flex zones to see that, you know, if it does expand to the rest of the county, whether or not that model would be more efficient than the hub-and-spoke model as well. So, it was an idea of kind of killing two birds with one stone, but you're meeting a direct need, but it really is trying to understand what the outcome is and whether or not it's something that could be scaled. That was my understanding with this. Okay. Thank you.
That brings up another point. There was a gentleman who spoke that shared about the, um, lesser services that are being provided in West Cobb, particularly when it comes to transit. When the microtransit system was initially considered, it was considered for areas that lost transit when we had budget cuts in 2011, where there was high need but lower riders to, lower number of riders to sustain a fixed route. The three, um, spokes that go into this hub-and-spoke system were in those areas that were hardest hit. And we knew there was interest in other areas of the county. And I think that led into the consideration for expanding this as part of a 30-year mobility sploß. There is no desire to not support West Cobb when it comes to transit, but there is desire to be responsive. And if you heard from a number of speakers today, there were some who don't believe that West Cobb should be serviced or that Cobb should be serviced by public transit because of the character that they perceive Cobb County and particularly some areas of Cobb County to have. So, there's a conflict. We want to be responsive. We want to be data-driven, and we want a tool that is successful. So, I think elevating your voice so that your commissioners and the Board of Commissioners know that there is a desire there, and also having that desire echoed by others helps us to better consider what possibilities are, or should be on the table for West Cobb. There was a comment about Cobb County should not have public transit. Cobb County is not built for public transit. Cobb County has been in the public transit business for over 30 years. There is opportunity to expand upon that and to give everybody the opportunity to get from point A to point B, irrespective of where they live or where they are trying to get to within our county. We are making Cobb County accessible for our citizens, because opportunity should be accessible for all of our citizens. So, I just want to address perhaps this misnomer that Cobb County does not have public transit. I also know that we'll have opportunity, perhaps flesh this out when we talk about our MSPLS, but comparing ridership numbers from 2013 to the time during the pandemic when people were not utilizing transit for one, out of fear of getting COVID, and two, because a lot of work patterns had shifted, it's not really comparing apples to apples. And also, what we are addressing is not just what's in place today, but we are being future-oriented and looking at what the interests are of our citizens that they are articulating to us, even though they may not be in your seats. We hear it from a number of citizens every day, and what our business community is articulating to us. And so, um, I just want to share that perspective again to this, to dispel some notion about Cobb not having, um, the opportunity to sustain public transit, nor is this being driven from outside of Cobb, nor are our ridership numbers able to support expanded transit. Commissioner Gamble, yes.
And I'm gonna keep my comments to microtransit since that is the agenda item we are discussing. Drew, I know you weren't here, but I believe it was in 2018, 17 or 18, that the county actually did a microtransit pilot program in the South Cobb area. And if I remember correctly, um, the service area would bring you to the transfer station that was at the South Cobb Hospital. Um, I believe the county allocated a million dollars towards that pilot program. And what I recall is, it was not successful. It failed. And at that time, citizens only had to pay a dollar to access the microtransit. So, two questions. A, do you remember that pilot that the county did? And then, two, if it failed at a dollar, why is it going to be successful at $2.50?
I, I'm not familiar with that program. I'm familiar with the flex zones at the current $2.50 rate. The, the two primary differences I'll share between flex and the microtransit is, again, the, the consolidated zone, that those three zones plus some additional area would be all, all covered in that, in that particular area. Uh, and then the, the second difference is how those rides are, uh, are scheduled. You know, currently, it requires a pre-reservation or, or a phone call to be able to make those, those reservations and to, to call for that trip. This would utilize an app-based, uh, geolocated program on someone's phone. There would still be some opportunity for folks to call in in case they did not have a smartphone. But that ride hailing, uh, being more similar to the, the, what folks are used to in terms of ride hail, hailing, will provide some additional efficiencies in terms of how those, those trips are taken.
So, if I can ask, um, can you go back and check with staff if we have the data from that pilot program that we had tried and essentially the, the parameters that were given for that?
Of course.
Thank you.
I can share with you, Commissioner Gamble. I was the district commissioner when that was implemented. And the challenges with ridership have led us to where we are today. It was deemed that the way that it was designed to have three lines come into a center point was not the most efficient and desirable way of designing that system. And it was articulated to us very early. So, we knew that there was a desire to expand it. We are here today really addressing something that we knew was an issue several years ago. Why, why did it take so long? We heard from a number of our seniors that they wanted to have microtransit. And so, for a long time, the county was actually considering a partnership with Uber and Lyft versus having our own system. And we were working on that contract for several years. And then we realized that there were just some provisions that could not be overcome to move that partnership forward. This is why we took it back to see how we can implement that internally on our own. And so, yes, Commissioner, if you get the data, it might show you that it did not perform as it was intended to or as was desirable. We are hoping that this will outperform that data. So, I would use that perhaps as a benchmark to see if this is a better-designed system.
And also, for clarification, there was a reference to the transit station in South Cobb. And currently, we are scouting and researching and analyzing a location for the transit station. Is there one that existed in 2018, Chair? Or Drew, are you aware?
The, what I'm familiar with, again, is the flex system. There's a, a transfer point, but not a transfer center. So, there, there was a point at which those zones converged, that someone could transfer to a different, uh, flex zone or to, uh, to a fixed route, sort of to, to a Route 30, for example, but, uh, not a station or center.
Okay. I just need a clarification. Thank you.
Yes, and to add on to that, that was part of the spoken hub system. So, that hub was Wall Star, and then you had those three lines coming into, um, where the Wall Star location was. Are there any other comments or questions? Just, again, there was another comment made about marketing of this system and ensuring that we have resources dedicated to that.
Absolutely. We, we have, uh, communication staff, both at Transit and DOT at large, that will be working with the communication staff here on the square to make sure that, uh, folks are well aware of the opportunity, how to, how to call for a ride, what the cost of the ride is, the best way to, to pay for that, the, the whole picture of that, that ridership experience and letting folks know what opportunities they have.
Thank you, Drew. Appreciate it. There's no vote on this matter, so no action needs to be taken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Forgive me. I need to take a quick, um, two-minute recess. Welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this June 11th, 2024. We are now at the public comment portion of our meeting. And I will turn things over to our county attorney to tee this off.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. All comments should be made to the Commissioner's body and addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be slanderous. The Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. There is a timer on the podium to keep track over your three minutes. The first speaker is Kevin Redman.
Hi, good morning, um, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. This morning, I'd like to discuss a crucial aspect that often goes unnoticed but significantly impacts our daily lives. That's the user experience in local mobility. This experience encompasses all aspects, including traditional vehicular transportation, mass transportation, microtransit, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Improving this experience is, is not just a necessity, it's an opportunity. We can better serve our community, leading to a more efficient and safer service delivery. This improvement, in turn, will naturally boost the utilization of a system that taxpayers have invested so much in already. Today, efficient transportation systems are the lifeblood of our communities. They connect us to work, education, healthcare, and leisure activities. However, the true measure of a transportation system's success is not just in its speed or coverage, but in the quality of the user experience it provides. A positive user experiences encourages the use of for, of more forms of mobility. When people find buses in microtransit services like bike-sharing and ride-hailing convenient, comfortable, and reliable, they are more likely to consider these options. The efficiency of a transportation system creates user satisfaction. Real-time tracking, seamless ticketing systems, and efficient route planning reduce waiting times and make travel more predictable. When users can rely on accurate information and timely services, their overall experiences improve significantly. This efficiency is especially crucial for microtransit options, which often serve as first-mile and last-mile solutions bridging the gap. Accessibility is another vital area of experience. This focus ensures that transportation services are designed to cater to everyone, including people with disabilities, seniors, and those with limited ability, mobility. I've talked before about how my dad spent the last 13 years of his life in a wheelchair and how this helped shape my perspective on this topic. But, but stops connected to actual sidewalks, more frequent and predictable routes, and the design of genuinely accessible door-to-door microtransit form a system that leaves no one behind. The MSPLS prioritization of user experience in Cobb's transportation network enhances convenience and builds a sustainable, inclusive, safe, efficient, and enjoyable system. It creates a network that truly serves the people and meets the diverse needs of our community. I encourage all five commissioners to approve this vote in November to give Cobb voters a choice to ensure that our transportation systems are functional and a source of pride and satisfaction for everyone. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sam Rel Foster.
Hello, I'm Sam Foster. Just speaking generally in support of MSPLS, but particularly, uh, the trail connectivity aspect of it. People want to talk a lot about transit as it comes to MSPLS, because of course, it is a significant part of the plan. But it's not the only part of the plan. There are essential, uh, connections, first and last mile connections, that we just don't have right now. A lot of the trails that we have go nowhere. It costs millions to build a few miles of trails, so it's typically not something that we can do in the short term. And this is a, a good opportunity county-wide to fund a lot of our essential trails that can really connect Mountain to River Trail, Noon, Noonday Creek Trail, to allow more residents to access those trails to get the, uh, get to the places they need to go. Me personally... Me personally, I bike as many places I can go. There are just not a lot of safe places for me to do so. If I go down Whitlock Avenue or Polk Street, I'll be biking along with cars going 40, sometimes 50 miles an hour, wondering if I'm gonna die. So the fact that it's a comprehensive plan for mobility in general, not just buses, not just transit, and it's actually thought through with the microtransit zones and all of that, it's a comprehensive plan to allow people who decide to get around in all different ways, including people in cars, more efficiently and more effectively, as opposed to what we have now today, which is heavily skewed towards motorists. That's pretty much it. Thank you for all of the hard work, all of the staff, all the hard work in putting this plan together. It's been very comprehensive, and I'm sure all of us don't agree, even proponents don't agree on everything that's in it, but it is very comprehensive, and it will be a significant step up from what we have today. Thank you.
Matt Stegall.
Hello, my name is Matt Stegall. I live in District One, West Cobb. Been living over 30 years throughout the county. I serve on the Trans Advisory Board, and I'm also advocate for better mobility. It's an honor and privilege to be here today, and I think it's worth mentioning that these 9:00 AM meetings are quite a hindrance and barrier for many people to attend in the middle of the workday. Luckily, I have the ability and the privilege to be able to take time off to attend this, and I just know that there's many people who wanted to be here who could not. It's also an honor because today is a historic day for Cobb County. Today, each of you Commissioners have the ability and the authority to allow the voters of Cobb County to vote on the transportation in this county for generations to come. Funding for transportation is very unique. The state directly funds billions and billions for highways and roads for a temporary fix, yet spends very little on transit, biking, and pedestrian infrastructure, which are all a public need that benefits everyone, whether they take it or not. For generations, we have built this county in a way that requires car dependency. We removed the trolley between the county and the city of Atlanta. We underfunded our bus system with low-frequency routes and the lack of bus shelters. We have a disjointed and unconnected network of safe biking and pedestrian infrastructure. This can all change on November 5th. IMSPLOS will provide consistent funding for comprehensive transportation that includes transit, biking, pedestrian, and, yes, even car infrastructure. Your vote today enables voters to determine if Cobb County will fund and invest in a comprehensive transportation system for all. A lot of people will come up here saying, "We don't want this," or "The county doesn't want this." But let's look at the data we have regarding the current county sentiment. In 2019, McLaughlin, a conservative pollster, showed that 54% of respondents would vote yes on a 1% sales tax to fund transit. In 2021, a survey as part of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan found that 70% of the county, said that 70% of the county needs more transit. Recently, in 2023, a poll by coefficient showed that 63% would vote yes on a 30-year IMSPLOST. Every single one of these polls have shown consistent support in funding better mobility for the county. What will November 5th, 2024, show? I encourage all Commissioners to support giving the voters a chance to decide. Thank you very much.
Barbara Coley.
I'm Barbara Coley from West Cobb, outside of Powder Springs. I've lived in Cobb County for 48 years now, either in Acworth or in the West Cobb area. And I want to thank all of you Commissioners very much for allowing me to speak on this IMSPLOST referendum. I've really come to address it from two different issues. The issue, one, of the quality of life of senior citizens, which a lot of us are growing into my area of being senior citizens, and the other being the freedom of us to have this representative government that we have. You are our representatives here in Cobb County, and what we are asking you to do is to give us the chance to give you feedback by putting this IMSPLOST referendum on the ballot in November. And between now and November, that will give all of us in Cobb County the opportunity to learn more about this IMSPLOST, to discuss it with our neighbors, our friends, with people who have a lot of expertise in this area, and make a rational best decision. I'm so glad that you're looking forward, 30 years forward, into what Cobb County can be, because when I first moved to Cobb County 48 years ago, I was just moving to Atlanta at the same time with a new job. And my coworkers asked me, "Why in the world did you select Cobb County to live?" And I was like, "Well, you know, I kind of liked the way it looked and kind of liked the apartment I was moving to." Didn't know that much about it. I have grown with Cobb County, and I appreciate so much of what you have done to improve the life, but particularly the quality of life, for the senior citizens. You have so much in the way of your senior services that we have. Health facilities, recreation facilities, exercise, arts, drama, so much, but, and of course, the health. But what is one common key element here? One common key element is getting to those facilities where they are being offered. And so we need to think about how we can best design a public and enhance public transportation as we grow older. And I know so many people I speak to, and I say, "Hey, why don't you go to this?" And they say, "Oh, you know, that's after dark. I really don't, I'm getting older, can't drive that well." So I'm so glad that you are looking ahead for the aging population and how to help us all. And thank you, and I hope you will vote to put SPOST referendum on the November ballot. Thank you.
Connor Manthe.
Hello, my name is Connor Manthe. I'm a resident of Cobb, a proud member of the Transit Advisory Board, and a transit writer myself. So many people seem to ignore a lot of the negatives of the car-dependent spaces we live in. You know, if you really thought about it, I doubt you'd want to keep the car choke sprawl. We have some of the loud, noisy roads, the long commutes or the haze. You really probably want Cobb to maybe be a little calmer, resemble those places you like to vacation, Seaside, Florida, Disney World even. You know, they have a lot of transit I like. But the truth is, a lot of these places can't really exist in our car-dependent systems. To provide all the parking and road space for everybody in Savannah, if everyone were to walk, you'd bulldoze the entire town. You know, others believe car dependency is some natural outcome of free market, or that there is a real choice in choosing these spaces. Our car-dependent system was created through a massive social experiment funded by the federal government after World War II. Suburbia, in the sense that Cobb is today, does not exist naturally. As Chuck Marona Strongstown stated, "The American development pattern is one of the greatest social, cultural, and financial experiments ever attempted." The knowledge we applied daily in this experiment wasn't developed by trial and error over the slow grind of centuries. It was advanced in academia and within government meeting rooms, initially based largely on the theories of European intellectuals," end quote. So between parking minimums, exclusionary zoning, federally subsidized highway expansions, government-backed loans, redlining, and more, the suburbia we know today was subsidized and regulated into existence. While this legitimately created prosperity for a good portion of the population, we now know that it has entrenched poverty for many and isolated us all from one another, forcing us into vehicles even for the simplest tasks. So Cobb now has a clear choice to push us away from this car dependency. We can keep widening roads to no avail, further increasing our commute times, or we can provide efficient alternative transportation, pedestrian cycling, and transit that require less infrastructure. So I really hope to see IMSPLOST on the ballot this fall so that we can all make a choice in how we want Cobb to be. I'd like to thank the Commissioners and the staff for balancing all the needs of our community. I know it can be contentious at times, but it's a hard task, and I don't think it's enough appreciation. So thank you.
Jim Kerr.
Madam Chairwoman, and Board members, good morning. My name is Jim Kerr, and I have lived in the same house in East Cobb for 52 years, off Lower Roswell Road, right behind Wheeler High School. For the first 27 of those years, I commuted to Fort McPherson, almost to the airport. I'm a retired Army Colonel, and over the past, for the past few years of my time at Fort Mac, I worked in the area of long-term planning for the Army, helping develop a force to support ground combat in the 21st century. It's time to think long-term about transportation in Cobb County. The debate has gone on long enough among those who can gain political or monetary advantage from one plan from another. But the residents need to be given a chance to vote on this matter, and the best time to do that is during the general election in November. While I recognize that I will benefit little from a decision made by the voters in November, I know that Cobb is becoming older and more diverse, and that's not going to change regardless of how the vote comes out. Once I give up my car keys and my independence to come and go as I want, I will become dependent on ride sharing, or relocation, or both. But that will not be sustainable over the long term. Not in my backyard fails to recognize that we are all in this together. It can't be, "I win only if you lose." There is a win-win solution to this if we are willing to look beyond our parochial visions of the future for me and mine and to blaze this with everybody else. We are scarcely a week past Memorial Day, when we pause to remember the sacrifices made by those who gave up their lives considering country more than self. It's time for us to trust the voters, to do the right thing, and support this 30-year plan. The alternative will be only a Band-Aid solution that can't be fixed without, in such a narrow window. Thank you.
Mohamed Sachi.
Hi, my name is Mohamed Sachi, and first and foremost, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board, the staff members, and everybody who's been involved in this process and giving us a choice. I moved to Cobb County just about two and a half years ago, and one of the deciding factors for me was the presence of this M2R trail. I think people take for granted how these systems are not just for recreation, they really do have a purpose, they really do change the modes of transportation that are available to residents. A little bit about me, I grew up in Gwinnett County, so a county not too different from our own. Went to Georgia Tech for two different degrees, and I've lived in different states. I've lived in Southern California, and I've lived in Texas. And the reason I bring that up is because I've seen firsthand how many different places treat transportation, whether it's transit, biking, pedestrian infrastructure as an afterthought. And the longer you kick this can down the line, the worse it gets. The costs really just explode if we wait 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So we have an opportunity right now to push ahead and create the systems that our county residents need. You know, I can tell you for a fact, we've had situations, my family, where we're not able to take my mom to her medical appointments because she's unable to drive. We've had situations where my sister's not able to get to college. And the presence of real, meaningful alternatives would be really, really helpful for those situations, and for new residents coming in, this is something that they very much would look at. You can look at major cities all around the country, and the cities with, you know, the most demand, the most number of inflows typically have really good, robust transit systems. This is something that they prioritize. This is something that people think about when they're moving. So I urge you to please, all five of you, please consider putting this on the ballot for November to give us a chance, because as you can see here, we're not really reflective of the full scale of Cobb County. We have, what, less than 200 people that could maybe make it at 9:00 AM on a Tuesday? It's not really representative of all of the people that would benefit from it. So please, give us a chance to vote on it in November. Thank you.
Chris Ziffel.
Good morning. Chris Ziffel, I live in Smyrna, I've been there 14 years. I support the IMSPLOST because it is an investment in the people of Cobb. We pride ourselves as a land of opportunity. High-quality public transit empowers individuals across our community to access that opportunity. New transit connects workers to more job opportunities and employers to more workers. Mothers and fathers who would like to work but can't get their children to daycare have options with transit. Students can access higher education opportunities at community colleges and Kennesaw State. Patients who currently cannot get to appointments can visit the doctor and the dentist. Better transit empowers citizens who cannot drive, including seniors and people with disabilities. Teenagers can work summer jobs without relying on parents to drive them. Freedom, choice, and opportunity flourish. We pay taxes for school bus transportation so that all of Cobb's children can learn. Likewise, the IMSPLOST will enable all of Cobb's residents to fully participate in our economy and community. We invest in public education and public health for a well-educated and healthy community. Likewise, we should invest in transit and trails for greater public mobility. With this improved mobility, we tap into the unrealized talents and potential of our entire Cobb community. I will vote yes for IMSPLOST because I believe in the people of Cobb County. Thank you for your time.
Virginia Chote.
Chote, been here before. Virginia Chote. Okay, I was invited by Commissioner Richardson with seven days' notice for a meeting for a Friday, May 31st, at 4:00 PM, and that was also only seven days ago. No map of changes were presented, and no cost-benefit analysis, and this was for the Lower Roswell Project. No map was there in the room. We heard statistics about the intersection of Johnson Ferry Road and Lower Roswell, but not why it is not called the Lower Roswell-Johnson Ferry Road Intersection Project, because that is the accident statistics that we were given. We did not receive any information from how medians on Lower Roswell would stop accidents inside this intersection. A median between the two lights will not keep cars from trying to beat a red light at the JFR-LR intersection. There are many more dangerous intersections in Cobb County. This board feels the need for a 10-foot-wide walkway between Johnson Ferry Road and Davison Road. There is already a sidewalk there. Why 10 feet wide? We were told in this meeting it is for middle-school children to purchase cookies at Park Air Mall. Putting a U-turn inside this intersection, in my opinion, will increase accidents. This project has not been well-thought-out, but apparently there is extra SPOST money from 2011 to 14 ago burning a hole in this commission's pocket. Mass transit buses is the next subject. Countywide is on the agenda today because why? Just so this board can spend money for 30 years, which is the length of time for this SPOST for buses. If you look at the map in East Cobb, you can easily figure out why this is wanted, since we have always voted down MARTA train for Cobb. We do not want to look like Sandy Springs. I have heard that plans are not just for an unnecessary bus from the Big Chicken to Merchant's Walk and a transit station there, but also on down Johnson Ferry Road to the river and towards the Roswell Square. We all know that they will continue on into Fulton County, coming and going from Sandy Springs, and what is in Sandy Springs? A MARTA train station. We also do not want to look like Roswell with tall apartment buildings everywhere, but apparently this board thinks this bedroom community needs buses. We have been given no statistics to prove this. They are now being ridden almost empty. So one today with three people on it.
Leroy Amkin.
Leroy Amkin, lived in East Cobb for the last 25 years. I'm going to address the Lower Roswell Road Project, the stretch of roadway between Johnson Ferry Road and Davison Road. The concern are the medians that the DOT plans to construct along this route. Nothing to do with the intersections at Johnson Ferry Road and Lower Roswell Road, nothing to do with the intersections of Lower Roswell Road and Davison Road, and the other intersection on the west side of Johnson Ferry Road. Just the issue of the medians. Is it cost-effective? You've all been, many of you have seen this sheet right here, and I'm going to analyze the meaning of this. There is a summary on this sheet of non-intersection-related crash history along Lower Roswell Road between Johnson Ferry Road and Davison Road, provided by the DOT. Their statistics, in the last 10 years, 2014 to 2023, there've been a total of 27 crashes along that road at which the, for which the DOT wants to raise medians, apparently to say- along that road at which the, for which the DOT wants to raise medians, apparently to provide more safety. The average over 10 years is 5.7 crashes per year. Let's say six crashes per year. Six crashes over a 12-month period, one year, is one crash every two months. The average daily traffic volume along that short stretch of road provided by the DOT is 18,350 vehicles per day. 18,000 vehicles per day. If we assume one-half of 1% of that, enter and exit the businesses on either side of the Lower Roswell Road, that's 92 vehicles per day. In fact, let's just, let's just assume 100 vehicles per day are entering and exiting the businesses along that stretch of road. Over a 30-day period in a month, 100 vehicles per day would be 3,000 vehicles per day. If there's one accident for every two months, that's 6,000 vehicles entering and exits, exiting businesses over a two-month period for which is one accident, just one. One crash per 6,000 vehicles for each two-month period, is that justifiable? The answer is no. Has the DOT counted the actual number of vehicles entering and exiting businesses per month? No. In fact, 100 vehicles per day or 6,000 vehicles for every two months is an extremely low estimate. More, a more reasonable estimate would be 500 vehicles per day entering and exiting the businesses, Kroger, McDonald's, and the other businesses along that route. This is 150,000 vehicles per 30-day month, or 300,000 vehicles per two-month period over which there's one accident? The conclusion is, there is no cost benefit to justify the design and construction of physical barriers.
Mr. Amkin, you're three minutes left. Chairwoman, that's the last of the speakers.
We are now at the consent agenda portion of this meeting. The items on consent have scrolled on the screen prior to the meeting, and will scroll on the screen once the meeting has concluded. Commissioners per our discussion yesterday, under their Community Development section, Agenda Item Number 19 pertaining to Cobb Quick Mart in District 4 has been removed from the agenda. Commissioner Richardson, can you let me know about Agenda Item 18?
To remove it as well.
Okay.
To come to a hearing.
So the Agenda Item regarding Peace SPA will also be removed from today's agenda. Okay. Commissioners, are there any other revisions? Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, just for clarification on 18, will that be a hearing, or is just for?
To come back as a hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That is the same for Agenda 19. It will come back for a hearing as well. Commissioner Burrow?
At the morning meeting. A morning, as we. Yes. I'd like to submit my statement.
Sure, thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Gamble?
And then I would like the clerk to record my statement as found on Page 137 of the current agenda. And then I would also like to submit amicus brief that I have submitted, and within this amicus brief, it brings up cases of the Georgia Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals holding that an unconstitutional law is void from the date of its enactment.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Commissioners, I move that we approve the items on the consent agenda as they have been revised, and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. We are now at the regular tab portion of the agenda, and first up is transportation.
Good morning again. The department has six items for your consideration this morning on the regular tab. The first three items are all related to the same project, and the district commissioner has asked me to provide a little bit of context prior to reading my recommendation. The 2011 SPOLOs was adopted by the Board of Commissioners on December 14th, 2010, and approved by the voters of Cobb County on March 14th, 2011. The revenue collected between January 1st, 2012, and December 31st, 2015 may only be used for the specifically designated projects as identified in the voter-approved list. Under the Safety and Operational Improvement category of the list, the Roswell Road between Woodlawn Drive and Davidson Road was listed for corridor improvements with the description widened to add turn lanes, median, and access management. As the department has developed this project, the public has been included with multiple meeting opportunities, including three public information open houses in November 2012, January 2013, and June 2023, three stakeholder meetings in November 2017, July 2019, and June 2022, three outreach meetings in April 21, August 22, and September 23, and multiple meetings with area businesses. Through that outreach, the public has had the opportunity to help shape the final design with engineering modifications that have included eliminating the median between Woodlawn and Johnson Ferry on the west side of the project, creating median breaks between Johnson Ferry and Davidson to serve local businesses on the east side of the project, and eliminating the proposed bike lanes within the project limits. With these revisions and others, the proposed design of the project includes construction of the following safety and operational improvements. Additional westbound through lane for Lower Roswell Road at Woodlawn Drive, dedicated right turn lane from northbound Woodlawn to eastbound Lower Roswell, dual left turn lanes from westbound Lower Roswell to southbound Johnson Ferry, dedicated right turn lane from westbound Lower Roswell to northbound Johnson Ferry, raised median on Lower Roswell from Johnson Ferry to Davidson with left turn bays providing access into Kroger and McDonald's driveways, sidewalks provided throughout the corridor, including a fourth crosswalk at both Woodlawn and Johnson Ferry Road intersections, an upgraded, upgrade of traffic signals at Woodlawn and Johnson Ferry with additional safety features, including retroreflective backlights. Relative to the raised median element, GDOT recommends, Georgia Department of Transportation recommends corridors with daily traffic in excess of 18,000 vehicles per day. Convert from a typical section with a center turn lane to a median based on safety risk. Additionally, the eastern segment of Lower Roswell Road has 19% higher traffic volumes, nine driveways and 830 feet, and 54% more crashes than the western segment of the project limits. Based on recent questions from the community and board, the department requested the engineer of record to develop a benefit cost for the project. Based on a methodology developed by the Georgia Department of Transportation, the engineer of record anticipates design life public benefits of $28,657,000 in delay reduction, and $12,46,000 in crash reduction for a total public benefit of more than $40 million. Compared to the costs of $8,530,000, the project provides a benefit-cost ratio of 4.77. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Incorporated in about not to exceed $7,030,505.46 for roadway safety and operational improvements on Lower Roswell Road, Project Number E6020, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So, so moved. Go into discussion.
Okay. Second.
And for discussion, so there are still some additional questions. I think you touched on most of them, but regarding the cost-benefit analysis, I know there was a copy that was provided as well for members in the audience, but if you can just kind of walk through how that cost-benefit analysis is conducted?
Of course.
And what standard it uses?
Of course. So, like I mentioned, Georgia Department of Transportation provides a methodology for that, and many of the traffic engineers throughout the state are very familiar with that. And Gresham Smith, their traffic engineer, conducted that benefit-cost analysis. Of course, the cost is fixed and known at this point, particularly with the construction bids in hand. In terms of the benefits, on the operational side, it is a time-based delay analysis, where vehicle delay is assumed to have a particular time value, for the time value of someone's, an individual's time, an average dollar per hour, as well as the time value to just operate a vehicle. That is converted into a dollar per hour, and then multiplied by the delay savings, so the difference in operations in the before condition and the after condition. Having about a 30% savings, time savings at the key intersections on the corridor then results into that total dollar amount that I read earlier. And then on the safety side, it is a similar analysis where crashes are ranked, provided costs with property damage-only, injury, and fatality crashes. And those costs are then assumed and calculated based on the expected crash reduction. In this case, that crash reduction comes from multiple sources. One is the intersection improvements to include those backplates. Turn lanes provide a safety benefit by separating turning movements away from each other. And then finally, the median provides safety improvements, and those safety improvements, rather than being projected based on a crash modification factor from the Highway Safety Manual, is projected based on actual data looking back over the recent crash history.
Thank you. Second question that also came up was related to the construction ambassadors. What was, I know that there was some outcome, what are some of the mitigated, mitigation techniques that are going to be applied for the construction phase here?
Of course, and this was a lesson that we learned actually during the Windy Hill Project, where access to those businesses is the lifeblood of those businesses, and being able to continue to operate successfully through construction is a primary goal of ours. Of course, we do everything we can to minimize delays to the travelers, but those that are most affected by the project are those that either live or operate a business within those project limits. And like I said, during the Windy Hill Project, we engaged a construction ambassador through our SPOLOs program management team that served as that liaison to provide information back and forth between those businesses and the contractor. The contractor is very focused on their schedule and production, the businesses are very focused on their access, and that ambassador serves as that middle person to communicate back and forth, so that if there is a particular time where a construction activity can take place, for example tying in driveways can be very disruptive, so identifying a day where that business is not operating for one reason or another, or hours that they're not operating, and helping the contractor to adjust their schedule, and then making sure that information flows readily, consistently to those businesses about what is happening.
Okay, thank you. And that coordination is also with, for most of this corridor, the tenants? I know the active businesses, that's who the construction ambassador spoke with?
That's correct.
And then, another question that came up was regarding the U-turns. Obviously, this forces more U-turns in the intersection, which of course, it's been mentioned a few times, that's where most, that's where most crashes happen, just in road analyses, which I'll get to kind of each improvement thing that's being assigned here. But for the U-turns, why, why would this necessarily be safer to have more of the cars take the U-turn as opposed to the merge lane?
Of course. So, and I'll focus on the north side of Lower Roswell Road, just because on the, on the south side, there is a left end that is provided through a median break. In terms of the access out, there are numerous access points with access to two different traffic signals that provides effective access for the Kroger Shopping Center, all of the tenants that are in that Jamestown property. On the, on the north side, due to lack of interparcial connectivity, that same opportunity was not there, and that relates into most of the nine driveways and that 830 feet. So the left end is provided at McDonald's. The left end for the other businesses is taken away. I will note that during, in particular, the AM peak hour, those lefts are very challenged in that the traffic turning left on Johnson Ferry backs up almost all the way to Davidson. So in some ways, it's an existing condition during the peak hours. But in terms of those U-turns, and in particular, U-turns at Johnson Ferry Road, the space is provided to protect those U-turns. Some of the challenge and some of the uncomfortableness that happens with U-turns and a driver is that not only do they have to judge a gap in traffic to make that movement, they also have to judge that gap to be sufficient to get up to speed now going 180 degrees in the opposite direction. Here at Lower Roswell and Johnson Ferry, it is provided, they would only be able to make that movement under a green arrow. The space is provided to make that movement possible, and there are no conflicting movements because the right turn on northbound Johnson Ferry is generalized, where they would have to observe any type of conflict. So once that arrow turns green, they have the ability to make that movement.
So basically, because it's not permitted, it's not at the choice of the driver?
Right.
That's where, this would reduce that impact. Okay, and then for the last piece, I know you mentioned each of the different modifications slash what this project entails as far as scoping is concerned. If you can just provide the safety benefit and the operational benefit assigned to each one, meaning like the right turn lane, the two left turn lanes. I know there's some signalization enhancements, the median, and then certainly, we have some other ends for this project as well. There's just, I know a lot of focus on the median area.
So in terms of each of those elements and kind of what they provide in terms of that safety and operational, and I'll walk through the list I provided earlier. The additional westbound through lane for Lower Roswell at Woodlawn, right now, it is a drop lane, and many folks coming from Johnson Ferry don't realize that until the last minute. So it's both a safety and operational improvement to have two through lanes there, and then push the merge point past the intersection, providing sufficient distance for emerging taper. The dedicated right turn lane from northbound Woodlawn to eastbound Lower Roswell Road is primarily an operational enhancement, to be able to separate that traffic, allow that right turn to take place without the through, the stopped-through traffic blocking that right turn. The dual left turn lanes from westbound Lower Roswell to southbound Johnson Ferry are primarily an operational improvement, again, mentioning that queue before, and then it allows that queue to be consolidated to allow that access into, into the left end to the McDonald's. The dedicated right turn lane from westbound Lower Roswell to northbound Johnson Ferry, again, allows for both safety and operational improvements by separating those movements and then providing that opportunity for that right turn to take place even when a through vehicle is blocking access. The raised median on Lower Roswell from Johnson Ferry to Davidson, just given the number of driveways and the opportunity for someone coming, looking to turn left while someone else is turning left into another driveway, while someone else is coming out of a driveway, provides that clarity for the drivers. And then the sidewalks provided throughout the corridor, including a fourth crosswalk at Woodlawn and Johnson Ferry, particularly at Woodlawn with the middle school so close, provides access there at that Lower Roswell at Woodlawn, that particular area, as well as some sidewalk extension. And then the upgrade of traffic signals at Woodlawn and Johnson Ferry with additional safety features, including retroreflective backlights. That is a safety enhancement both for during the day when there's potential glare issues, as well as at night, and if the signal goes dark, that retroreflective border provides that indication to a driver, there is a signal here, even if they aren't necessarily familiar with the area.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last component, of course, that's come up with regards to the bike lanes, which the bike lanes have been removed in kind of a compromise for a widened sidewalk. And so just curious on the, there have been questions about the added expense related to the widening sidewalk, or what the impact is from a right-of-way perspective, and you can clarify for me, but that's not what impacts the need for the right-of-way on the northern side?
That's correct. Right-of-way acquisition began after the board approved the concept, so most of the right-of-way, except for two parcels that'll be considered later, has been acquired. So with that design change, it was all done within the acquired right-of-way, or the required right-of-way, I should say, of the project. In terms of the cost difference between a widened sidewalk and a five-foot sidewalk, it would be the material cost, because much of the labor of the right-of-way has already been purchased.
Okay. I shared with the community at one point, I said maybe like 100,000 or so, and you said it's probably around, it's a couple thousands. Okay. And then the only other remaining thing that was on the list that I have was regarding the legal questions that have come up, and I don't know Bill can address, or I know we spoke about just generally what the feedback has been, since it's a 2011 project, but it wasn't a part of our SPOLOs vote for it to be a time-limited project. And so, the expiration isn't real, there's no expiration on this. It's just sitting.
That's correct. That's correct. There's no expiration on this SPOLOs project.
Okay, and then tied to that, the infeasibility bar, just curious, because that's also been a question, just to kind of shed light on what it takes to deem a project infeasible?
Well, you would have to declare the entire project infeasible, not because some people don't like it, but they can't be completed at all. One of the reasons would be you don't have the funding for it. Here, you actually have the funding for it, so.
It's designated funding. Okay. Well, those were the questions that I pulled and had, and that I, some of that is also present in those documents as well, in addition to the crash data with the arrow diagrams as well. But open floor for other commissioners if they have questions. This has been obviously a very sticky project and has gone through multiple iterations. So before I do hand the mic over to any other questions, just want to thank staff for all the due diligence. I know it's been a lot of different meetings, a lot of questions, and so thank you for the patience in working through all of this information.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Gambrell.
And Drew, I will give you the option not to answer some of these questions because I'm going to throw a lot out here. It is very obvious, as we know, when we do SPOS projects, the county always goes over in funding. So there is no way that we can have enough funding from 2011, which we have stopped collection on, to do this project in a whole. So we sit here and we say, oh, we're taking out the sidewalks, we're reducing this, we're making it so we can fit it in within the feasibility of the funding that we have. Yet I would encourage the citizens to carefully go look at the MSPOST list of projects. Because while we just heard that they were taking out the sidewalk and the trails extensions, we have, just my quick estimate, $25 million in the project list specifically for this project to expand on. But again, that's a different boat, that's the MSPOST. I also find it interesting that in this project in its totality is about $136 million, which is 22% of the total unincorporated Cobb County funding. Now, while you might think that sounds like a lot, the amount that we've allocated for unincorporated Cobb County is $641 million, but the total projects listed comes to $822 million. So right there, we've got more projects than we're expecting funding to come in. Why does this matter? I had several speakers very eloquently state that District One is not being served, and they are exactly right. Because if you look at this $641 million of projects, you will see no road improvements, intersections, sidewalks, anything for District One. There is one project on here for Powder Springs Road. I had given funding for that one back in 2019 when I first came into office, and I was told that we had received federal funding for it. So it then begs the question, if we have federal funding for it, why is it on this project list? I think this whole project flies in the face of promises that were made, yes, by a previous board, to the business owners in that area that made some business decisions based on the promises the government had provided. I don't think the county is being honest with the citizens who maybe are only looking at the Lower Roswell Road project with the 2011 SPOST, not knowing what the MSPOST is also planning to do with this area.
That brought up a lot of questions. I don't, we can start with, I guess, what, what project is considered, what, how are we pulling something out of MSPOST for this project? Because I'm not, I understand, and I'm asking Drew for extra clarification, because there's, this is a project that is completely separate from MSPOST conversations.
In terms of the project list, and Commissioner Gambrell, I believe you're on page 31, is that correct? Of the, not of the, or 214 of the agenda booklet?
Thirty, actually, on mine. But I know.
You're correct. The two, so there is BP 230 Lower Roswell Trail Extension Part A, which is an accessibility project at $727,947. And then BP 329, which is Lower Roswell Trail Extension Part B, Access Trail, $1,021,039. Those projects, and any project that you see in the MSPOST project list is associated with projects as identified in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Both of those are listed with an identifier, BP, which stands for Bike Ped. So those would be Bike Ped Trail Extension projects. I do not have the limits in front of me. I would suspect that those are limits outside of this project. I would have to refer back to the CTP to identify those limits exactly. But that would be based on, like I said, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan as well as the Greenways and Trails Master Plan. Unrelated to the safety and operation.
So meaning some other part of Lower Roswell Road likely is what that's tied to?
That would be my presumption, but I would have to verify with the CTP.
And Drew, if I can help you out, the ones that I was looking at, East Cobb Trail, Johnson's Ferry Road North, six, over $6 million.
I see.
East Cobb Trail West, Extension Part B, 2.8 million. East Cobb Trail, Johnson's Ferry Road South, 7.2 million, were some of those that I was pulling in. But then on page 32, and again, this is kind of a general one, but it was State Route 120, Roswell Road widening. Again, I don't know what the limits of that is, but that's at over $100 million.
That's right. And what I'll, some additional clarification about that, and I know this gets into that item, but the, you're correct, the total city allocation is that $641,426,000, and then the remainder would be the, for the unincorporated. Looking through these project lists and how this was developed is we assigned for the transit supportive component of the MSPOST, which is at $1 billion over that full lifetime. First, that funding was split up between the unincorporated county and the cities based on population to provide a funding amount that is very similar to our current SPOS programs in terms of the methodology. And then, in order to be both specific and flexible, because the House Bill 930 requires that each of those projects has a transit nexus included in there. The specificity we provided is the funding that would be available in the initial allocation, the short range, which would be years two through five, the mid-range, which would be years six through 10, and then the long range, which would be everything beyond that. And then, in order to provide flexibility, but also some level of specificity, but flexibility to the board, was we then took the definition of that transit nexus, applied it to all the projects identified in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan to develop this list, to show a menu of options that would be available to the board. But transparently, if you total up any of these lists, whether it's the unincorporated list or any of the individual city list, it exceeds the funding that is allocated to each of those, to the unincorporated and to each of the seven cities. Again, providing those opportunities and those options to either split fund it, either through state federal funds, for example, the Roswell Road being a state route would be a good candidate for federal funds, or to split fund with other local funding sources as may present themselves over the lifespan. So the list of projects provides those projects which are eligible for that transit nexus but are not intended to be all inclusive and for every one of them to be funded, because like I said, the funding exceeds the available that is listed out in the allocation.
There was another point brought up around changing the project to fit the cost, and we, the changes to the project are purely from the feedback on what we could change from an engineering perspective. We even tried additional modifications as recently as a couple weeks ago. But it was not, it did bring the cost down in those modifications, but that was not the, the goal was to actually solve the key issues and try to mitigate where there could be impact. Yeah, as far as the other questions, I mean, we can look at that when we get to the MSPOST agenda item, but I do have an open question on are there District One trails that you were interested in having on the CTP? And that may be an opportunity for, I don't know what the flexibility is like for that conversation, but yeah, this project, I just wanted to be very clear, the scope of this project is very, very contained. This is, in 2011, there wasn't even contemplation of the MSPOST. So it is a separate scope project, and I think we found as many compromises as possible with it.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
Just a quick question on the project selection, for clarification. Drew, you mentioned that a lot of the projects to pull from the comp plan, and we kind of worked around that. But you also met with the commissioners, or at least with me, I recall having multiple conversations with you with respect to projects that not were, not only on the comp plan, but also projects that I would be interested in seeing in my district. And I just want to confirm if that conversation occurred with commissioners other than myself?
It was not the only resource, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan for those projects. We also took any individual project that was requested. Those have a different identifier. It's just if you see that BP or that R, it does come from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. In terms of why this list is not longer, in terms, because more, more projects were identified for both Bike Ped and roadway in all four districts, it really comes down to what is allowable by state law. So we included as much as we could that had that transit nexus that either improved the operations of the proposed transit system along a fixed route, or was an accessibility project which provided Bike Ped transportation within a buffer around those routes, to make sure that we stayed compliant with state law in terms of, again, that transit nexus, but also opened it up to the full picture of mobility to the greatest extent possible.
Okay. And just on the heels of being allowed by state law, so if we proposed, if a commissioner, if I proposed a project in my district and it was not allowed by state, does that mean that it would not have moved forward with the mobility SPOST?
If it is, if it is not eligible under those transit supportive definitions, would not be eligible for MSPOST.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, when this Lower Roswell Road project was voted on by a previous board, none of us were here when that list was developed and voted on and went to a referendum. So, and I have a lot of concern with why, if it was a good, a good project and warranted, why was it held by the former District Two Commissioner who was here at the time when the list was developed and voted on and the referendum passed? Why was it held for 14 years? Well, 10, 12 years, I guess, under the former Commissioner. Why was it held and delayed all that time and now it's coming back? To me, it's not warranted with the crash data, one per month, or not even one per month. For, and I know that we've had several meetings publicly with the businesses, with the community, and the opposition is overwhelmingly 10 to 1, I would say, with emails and open houses and meetings that we've had with the community, citizens and businesses outweighs any one in support that we've not heard from, if there are any. I know with a lot of this, the only revisions with the things that have been requested, I know no one wants a median there, the businesses especially, it restricts their access. I know we did make a cut to turn left into the shopping centers on both sides, and we put the bike trail up on the sidewalk and widen the sidewalk, which gets it out of the road, which to me was a safety issue with the bike trails, with the cars and pedestrians. So I can't support this, especially with putting businesses out of business and condemning them to do this project. That to me, and the overwhelming response in opposition, and why it was, it's taken 14 years to come back. But I do thank you for all your patience and letting me be part of the meetings, even though the District Two Commissioner has the final say.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Just for clarity, I was going to bring it up in the next agenda item related to the condemnations, but if you can just give us clarity on what that procedure, why that procedure is in place in the book?
Sure. So the, the, the number of parcels on this project exceeded 30, and we do everything we can during the right-of-way acquisition phase, which falls after the concept approval and the preliminary plans are completed, to negotiate with parcels to mitigate anything possible on those projects. And that can include things like design changes, sometimes minor, sometimes more significant. Can include negotiations, of course, about compensation to make sure that it is fair compensation. The law is very clear that any, any taking of property either through a negotiation or through the condemnation step is required to provide fair and just compensation. And what the, what the next item, the condemnation item allows is authority to condemn, does not necessarily condemn. And what that, that does is because of the number of individuals, the number of vehicles, the traffic along transportation corridors, and the inability to do those projects somewhere else. Those projects have to take place where they are and do have impacts to private property that, that is a process that is restricted, restrictive, but allowable by law to allow for these public benefit projects to continue forward. And so, like I said, it would provide the department authority to condemn those properties just if there is, we're unable to negotiate fair and just compensation prior to the project beginning. And then authorize the staff to move forward and the contractor to move forward with the project should those negotiations fail. And then it opens up a judicial process that does have a legal steps associated with that to make sure, again, that it is fair and just compensation for anything that is taken.
All right. And I believe it was also shared with me that there are some tax benefits as well by having the condemnation proceeding for the parcel, the property owner?
I've understood that in some cases, that due to it being a settlement of litigation, that there, there may be, but that would be an individual determination.
And then the other question about 14 years, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this has been going through iterations during that time period. It hasn't, unless it has just been sitting on the shelf?
No, that's correct. It's gone through, and I listed out some of the meetings that happened, and I believe they date back to, the first public open house was November of 2012. And there have been numerous public meetings, stakeholder meetings, of course, any zoning cases that have happened throughout that time have helped to shape that project. So there's been continued negotiations, discussions, and concept development throughout that time.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
One more question, Drew. Once, if this is approved, once this goes out to bid for, well, the scope for construction, will it have to follow exactly what's proposed here with the median, or will there be any revisions down the road? Or is it for this, what's outlined in this project?
Staff would move forward under the project as bid, which includes those elements that I listed out before. Definitively, we never know what we can find in construction, so sometimes there are some modifications due to constructability concerns that have to take place over the life of a project. But any of those changes, if they're minor, would be handled in the field inconsequential, but if they are consequential, would have to come back before the board. So any significant changes to the concept would have to be at the direction of the board.
Okay.
Does that answer it?
Removing the median would be significant.
It would.
But that's not part of the plan right now. But it, could, could it change?
At the discretion of the board. At the discretion of the board.
Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Our next item. The Department recommends the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA Section 32-3-4. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on two parcels on Lower Roswell Road, Project Number E 6020. Adopt resolutions and orders in form substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the county attorney's office, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
And just a note, there are two condemnations that are listed here. The first one is a condemnation of .234% of the total tract, and the second condemnation is a total of .009% of the total tract.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Our next item is recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $37,222 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Lower Roswell Road. Project Number E 6020, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 3-2, again with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Prior to the, reading the recommendation on the next item, just a point of privilege, decisions and policy, of course, belong to the board, but staff works diligently to support those decisions. And so I'd like to take a moment just to thank the DOT staff that put in a lot of hard work into bringing this agenda item forward, in particular Morgan Simmons, Laura Bell, Jonathan Yee, Mark Lambert, Carl Von Hegel, and many other staff at DOT that, again, worked diligently to serve the policy and decisions of the Board of Commissioners. By way of introduction, House Bill 930 of the 2018 session of the Georgia General Assembly allows the county to develop a referendum to levy a sales tax for the purposes of funding transit capital projects and transit operational projects. On February 8th, 2022, the Board of Commissioners adopted the Comprehensive Transportation Plan 2050 CTP recommendations report. This report was based on substantial technical analyses and a robust public engagement effort to address current and future transportation system needs of residents, support the economic vitality of Cobb County, and support regional connectivity. Since the adoption of the CTP, the department has engaged in further technical analyses, public involvement, city engagement, and commissioner policy discussions to identify opportunities to improve the county's transportation network. On December 12th, 2023, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with development of a mobility splosts, MSFLOST ballot referendum for November 2024, along with a program of projects with the goal to increase connectivity and promote a thriving community for all. Subsequently, the department has finalized the House Bill 930 statutorily required coordination with the county's qualified municipalities in the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority. A list and detailed description of the projects anticipated to be funded with the MSFLOST proceeds is attached to this agenda item. This agenda item, if approved, represents the final Board of Commissioners action necessary to place the referendum before the voters on the November 5th, 2024 ballot. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution imposing a Cobb County 1% mobility special purpose local option sales tax specifying the specific transit projects to be funded by the proceeds of such tax request, and requesting the election superintendent to call an election of the voters of Cobb County on November 5th, 2024, to approve the imposition of such sales and use tax, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Drew. You thanked a lot of people with respect to getting us here. I want to thank you, Drew. You've put in a lot of work into helping us call the list of projects eventually, but just even getting us to consider how we would progress with consideration of this and also another House bill. Want to, there's no point of privilege at this, excuse me, I'm sorry, sir, I'm going to ask for you not to address the board at this time in this manner. No, sir. Sorry. Thank you. But again, just want to thank you for all of your work, the commissioners for all of your work too, in communicating with staff and our community for all of your feedback to help us get to this point today. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve this agenda item as it has been presented.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Commissioner Sheffield.
No, I just also like to thank Drew and your team. It's been a lot, a lot of work, several meetings, not just with us, but other organizations, and also with the community. But I do have a question, and I don't know, Madam Chair, if it would be appropriate, but I just wanted to confirm when we will begin our community outreach. I guess that information will also be shared online?
Of course. So that has begun in earnest, more on the meeting with Rotary Clubs, Kiwanis, the senior citizens and council. So we have begun and have made ourselves available to any of those particular groups to come and present and provide information about what is included in the program. And we've been running in parallel, developing a lot of the messaging materials, so that work is ongoing and nearly complete. We will begin more of that dedicated, specific public outreach pending action on this particular item, and then, yes, that information will be available, of course, on our website. We'll share it with you all for inclusion in your newsletters, any of the resources that you have available.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Burl.
Thank you, Drew. First of all, I've been on this board for 14 years and did vote for the 2016 and '22 county splosts to go to a referendum. I do feel like that it's the voter's opportunity and decision to make, to go to a referendum and vote. However, those were six-year projects, six years. We're talking about 30 years, and I can't support binding not just future boards for 30 years, but citizens and kids and grandchildren that I won't be here, but they will, and they'll be paying that, along with, I know, people coming through the county and spending, you know, money in the county that don't live here, but it's still, it's too long of a project that it's, and the amount and a 30-year period, I can't support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Gamble.
Drew, I know we had quite the discussion and work session yesterday, and I know you sent out an email, but I didn't see the pink sheet to make that correction in the agenda book.
We, we've updated that proposal and sent it out to the board in terms of procedurally the next steps. I defer to the clerk or the county attorney.
And I was included on that email, so I have it, and there was actually a copy of that. I know y'all all received it, so I didn't distribute again, but there is a copy of the updated version placed for the public in the back.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. While I do not support the MSFLOST, there is many reasons I do not support the MSFLOST. One is not all areas are equally being served throughout the county, yet everyone in the county contributes to the congestion on our roadways. I also find it very interesting, the update that we received from Mike Plant, where they were able to monitor that 10 million people visited the stadium. Eight million people came from outside the county. We currently have transit that would take these visitors to the stadium, yet the ridership has still declined. People are not choosing to use the transit. We speak of spoken hub and how it's broken, yet what we have proposed here is not going to help improve that spoken hub. Matter of fact, you're leaving out 25% of it. I also find it very interesting, based on our conversation yesterday, that one of the benefits is the county would not have to subsidize the transit subsidy, which is upward of $28 million a year, using general fund monies, because, of course, in the MSFLOST, it allows us the ability to use those funds to cover that subsidy. So then, as I was thinking, I'm like, well, wait a minute. If we're automatically going to have $28 million more in our budget if this MSFLOST passes, why are we looking at a stormwater tax? I'm sorry, fee, as some say it. Because with 28 million more, that means we can also stop the $15 million water transfer. So while the county, in our mission statement, is to make Cobb County the best place to live and work through an efficient, effective, and responsive government that delivers services, are we really, are we really looking, taking a holistic approach at cost and benefit? I don't think so.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, I did want to just say thank you as well, but to the, to the point that you brought up with the MSFLOST, that's absolutely true, and I know that on this board, there's a desire to actually not have that $15 million transfer if MSFLOST does pass, because it opens up the opportunity to have that discussion. Unfortunately, that $15 million will also not be able to go towards stormwater, but it would get rid of the $15 million transfer. And so, did want to just say, yeah, that's true, that's accurate. But certainly just want to send my appreciation as well to staff, working very hard on this, a lot of surveys. I know there was an original desire for a referendum a couple of years ago, and appreciate just the steadiness to say, hey, let's halt, let's do some more surveys, let's do some more community outreach. It's never going to be more, you know, there's always more opportunity to do more outreach, but there was able to be a lot more pulled into this one. And I think while there's still, like you said, you can't agree with everything that's in there, but there are some really good things that will help move the county forward. And when you look at these projects, some of them take 30 years, and I will never stand in the way of the voters deciding on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Excuse me. No, excuse me, sir. I need some assistance. Matter of fact, why don't we go ahead and take a recess so we can address this situation? Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We were deliberating Agenda Item Number 27 with respect to adopting a resolution imposing a Cobb County 1% mobility special purpose local option sales tax specifying the specific transit projects to be funded by the proceeds of that tax. During our break, I understand that there actually needs to be a revision to the motion that was on the floor to reflect the changes that Commissioner Gambrell brought to our attention. So what I would like to do is to revise my motion to approve the agenda item as it has presented with reference to the revised list of projects.
Second. Okay, thank you. Discussion? Yes, we can continue discussion. Unfortunately, I don't remember, were we on you, Commissioner Sheffield?
It was just a-
Okay.
A, a quick question, or actually, if Drew can provide a little clarification on the 30-year commitment. Clearly, that's a concern of many. It was mine at first, if you recall, our first meeting together. And during that, there were several things that you shared, that one, it makes it eligible for federal fund match, and also, a lot of that is for operational costs. So if you can just kind of walk, walk us through that a little bit, so that people are understanding, it's not that it's one to two projects that's going to span over a 30-year before completion.
I'd be glad to. So as, as I understand the legislative intent, when HB 930 was, was passed by the, the General Assembly, the traditionally, as Commissioner Burl mentioned, general splosts, the transportation splosts that had been provided as an opportunity to counties previously, were all in that four to six-year timeframe generally. Because it, because they're very capital in nature, and generally, smaller projects. And so that four to six-year timeframe allows for the, the county to project out what those needs would be, and then be able to deliver them within a reasonable timeframe. The, when, when they came around to transit and considering transit, transit referenda throughout the, the country include a much longer timeframe, and, and that is what the General Assembly made available in, in House Bill 930. And, and the reason for that is because of those operational costs. And in order to provide sustainable funding, that, that funding needed to have that consistent resource, so that the planning for a long-term transit system, where many of those projects do take significant amount of time to deliver, would not be, have to, have to be reconsidered or confined into shorter four to six-year timeframes. And then in terms of the, the funding, much of what is proposed as funding for, for the larger projects, the high-capacity bus rapid transit connection projects assume, and we believe that the projects proposed here are competitive for the CIG program, the Capital Investment Grant Program through the Federal Transit Administration. And as part of applying for those funds, what FTA requires is that the county demonstrate how that, that project would be funded for the long term. Because what they do not want to have happen is for federal investment, or, or in, in this case, local investment into a large BRT, high-capacity project, that can only be operated for, or known to be operated for a period of four or five years, at which point, should, should that operational funding no longer be there, that the investment is no longer valid. And so FTA requires a 20-year funding strategy to demonstrate that the, the local operating authority has the ability to continue to operate that for the, for the long term. And then, I'm sorry, you had a, a second part to that question that I failed to, to answer, and that was in terms of the delivery. And so what we have put together, and it is on our, our website, and, and anyone can, can find it at CobbCounty.org/MSFLOST, is the, is the delivery cadence. And so what we have put together is what we anticipate to be able to deliver in the first five years, in the second five years, and then the full duration. And what, what folks would see when reviewing that information is that much of the system gets built out in that first 10 years. We, we do as much as we can in the first five, but, but generally, most of it is built in that first 10. And then beyond that, the, the remainder of the program is really about maintaining it in a state of good repair, to make sure that it is responsive to the changing needs of the county, that the, the shelters, the buses, the technology that's utilized is, is well-maintained and updated in a timely manner beyond that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you, Drew. In, in our book, on page 178, Section B, 1 and 2, it's the language of how it will read on the ballot. So my question is, as we have these public meetings and hearings and get input from the public on the specific lists that we're voting on now, will that be able to change if the, if it specifically says, you know, the, the list that's been developed now?
After this action is approved, the ballot question in the program of projects is set and cannot be changed without an action by the board. And, and I will remind the board, and I don't have the date specific, but there is coordination with elections to be able to get this on the ballot. So th- this is the opportunity to, to change any of that ballot language, any of the program of projects. After, after this, it is set until that November referendum, barring any last-minute changes prior to the timeline with elections to actually get it onto the ballot.
Okay. So it's not like our other open houses where we do feedback forms and have public input? It is set in stone what is going to be on the list.
That's right. Very similar to general splosts, where after the board places it on the ballot, those educational meetings are really about, here's the project list, here's the, the ballot question, here's the information about what is included. Voters, it is your turn to make a decision.
Well, the list can't be changed.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm just going to follow up on Commissioner Burl's comments, because while we're going to be putting out a list, and it's quite an extensive list to the voters, not all those projects can be funded, if you look at what each city has given. For example, and, and I'm guessing this is on the right page, you've, you've kind of got me questioning here, Drew. But for Austell, the total city, city allocation is $10 million. Yet their first project listed, that is going to be what people see, is Wild Horse Creek Trail South Part A for a bike pedestrian trail. But that trail alone cost $11 million. So yet here again, we're going to be go out educating the public of, okay, these are the projects we're going to do if you pass this MSFLOST, but we're not going to give you enough money to do one complete project. Are we going to be educating the community in that regards as well?
Absolutely. And, and ju- just what I mentioned previously about the, the funding is, is allocated based on the typical splosts allocation, the projects are provided for opportunity, for selection, and, and, and you're right, it will be clear that the funding is not sufficient to take care of all of the projects listed here, but it provides, in, in this case, the City of Austell, the opportunity, the flexibility to select which of those projects, based on the eligibility that's already being considered, which projects, and when to fund those projects.
So, Commissioner?
Forgive me, Drew, but I forgot to mention this on yesterday, but Wild Horse Creek should be under the Powder Springs list. That's in Powder Springs, not Austell. I neglected to mention that on yesterday at the work session. Unless there is a different part that runs through Austell, but I don't believe that there is.
That's the trail. Maybe the trail is in Austell.
Yeah, is the trail in Austell?
Our, our staff has gone through each of these to verify those, those limits.
Okay.
But, but we'll, we'll go back and-
That's fine. Thank you.
Make sure.
Commissioner Burl?
I'm confused. So if these projects are over the amount projected, they get to, the cities get to pick and choose what projects they're going to prioritize, or do first, or?
They do. They're, they're provided the funding. The funding is, is set and established, and then they would have the opportunity to select which of those projects under which timeline, that they would move forward, much, much like our, our regular splosts.
Yeah, but what's on the list, it has to be done as a splosts project. If it's on the designated list.
So I'll, I'll share too, this is very similar to our federal-state-local-match component of our 2022, 2022 splosts. If, if we were to go through that and add up all of those projects, again, it, it exceeds the 25 million that was allocated for the state-fed matching bucket. It was really to provide information to the voters of, here are the types of projects, here are the projects that we know about right now that are eligible for these funds. And, and, and this just provides that opportunity for the public to see into the, the mind of the, the planners which projects are being considered, but then still providing that flexibility to the, the city councils to, to make decisions for what makes the most sense within their cities.
Thank you, Drew. For our public, the list of projects that commissioners are referring to are in Appendix A of the program packet that we've received. Appendix A has a preceding paragraph that states that the list of projects for each city have been determined to be eligible, not actionable. These are eligible projects based on identification in the comprehensive transportation plan and/or coordination and input. Verbatim, this list is not intended to be inclusive, to be exclusive, as other projects that satisfy the eligibility definitions may be funded in addition to or in place of the listed projects. Cobb County and the city will partner to determine which of the projects will be selected for implementation through the mobility splosts. In addition, Cobb County DOT will seek to leverage MSFLOST dollars whenever possible as matching funds for federal, state, and local grants for identified projects. Let's be clear, there is no assertion that any of these projects will be implemented. These projects are a possible list based on what the city and the county choose to move forward with, and there is deference given to the city. And I know the cities are looking forward to having autonomy in working with their residents to determine how to implement funds that would be provided. Let's not make that a bar, or that not be used to have it perceived that something not in goodwill is being included or asserted here.
Sure. And I'll, I'll also add, just for, for clarification, that, that only applies to the transit supportive projects. For the remaining 90% of the program, those are specifically listed and identified projects that, that are fully financially constrained, based on the financial model, and to be delivered within the timeframe of the splosts, and within that short, medium, and long-range implementation plan that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have significant opportunity to move forward today. And while, yes, this is a 30-year opportunity, this is not the first 30-year opportunity that has been before this board, where even the commissioner that's concerned about the length of this program saw the vision with that last project and supported it, with the same opportunity to bind people that follow in the years after the implementation of this project. What it comes down to is do we perceive that the future is worth it? That the opportunity is worth it? Yes, the details do matter, but the opportunity and the vision also matters here as well. And I perceive that we can do something that is transformational, as we have done before and seen the fruits of, for this county. That transformational project has had a regional draw. This project could have a regional draw, but it also enhances our ability to serve our own citizens. As was shared in comments, this project will not address the Spokan Hub system. That's exactly what it addresses. It addresses it by applying the ability to have on-demand transit for the entire county. We would like for all of the county to be served equally or equitably. As was shared by Commissioner Sheffield or inferred, every commissioner had opportunity to speak to DOT and make their interests known. What constrains investment is whether or not that commissioner desired for transit-oriented project, or transit to be limited. If transit is limited, then the transit-oriented or related projects are also limited. But that does not limit our focus for all areas of the county. It is our desire that this uplifts and serves, and there is benefit to everyone who is here by way of direct projects, perhaps even in the reduction of congestion, or an enhanced mobility that can be obtained through on-demand transit. I ask for us to please consider, even if we don't agree with all the benefits before us today, let's give the voter the opportunity to decide, as has been articulated over and over again. There were a number of speakers that spoke today with respect to the impact that this could have for them, whether they're a senior, whether they're younger, whether they use an alternate mode of transportation, or they just are supportive of transit. There are some people who are opposed to seeing this in their community. We have opportunity to give every one of them an opportunity to determine where Cobb stands on this issue in November. And I would ask, if we don't have the, maybe if, if we don't perceive the visionary impact of this being implemented in 30 years, let's at least have the vision of letting our citizens decide in November. With that, Commissioners, I call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioner Burl's and, excuse me, Gambrell in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $4,978,000 for Old Floyd Road at Veterans Memorial Highway, Project Number X 2329. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Cumberland Core Loop Segment D, Cobb County Project Number B 2434, and Cumberland Core Loop Segment E, Cobb County Project Number B 2433, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Kimbley Horn &amp; Associates Incorporated.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0, excuse me, I'm sorry, the motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Gambrell in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at our Public Services tab, and we have one agenda item from Parks. We get the director with us today.
A little, little taller than Michael. Good morning. Good morning, Chairwoman, Board of Commissioners, Madam County Manager. We have one item that I'll be presenting this morning for your consideration, and it's for the Board of Commissioners to approve a purchase order with HD Excavation and Utilities LLC to provide construction services for the addition of a sanitary sewer system at Big Shanty Park under the 2022 Park Splosts Program. The current park septic system that is servicing the baseball complex is past existing life and has caused major maintenance issues failing regularly. Park users have become frustrated with the septic failures, and a change to sewer will ensure a quality, long-term solution. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the purchase order with HD Excavation and Utilities in an amount not to exceed $533,500 for the construction of a new sanitary sewer system at Big Shanty Park under the 2022 Park Splosts Program, authorizing the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions?
I, thank you. And I know all the users, this is a very heavily-used park, we do a lot of tournaments there. It'll be greatly appreciated, so thank you.
All right, call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have to excuse myself, as I have a plane to catch. I will turn the rest of the meeting over to our vice chair. Thank you.
We are now at our second set of public comment.
Yes, and the first public speaker is Alex C.
Hi, I'm Alex, and I just wanted to thank the commissioners and staff for moving this onto the ballot and letting us think forward into the future instead of being limited into five-year programs. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Tyler Haber.
First off, I would like to thank the commissioners for letting us vote on this in November. I very much look forward to voting to expand transit. My name is Tyler Haber from District 4. I'm very excited to be able to speak in favor of more transit in Cobb County. I would like to, first of all, say that I consider myself very fortunate to be able to take the day off of work today to speak to all of you in support of improving the bus service here. Through this service, I've been able to access the best of what Cobb has to offer. Through this service, I've been able to access the best of what Cobb has to offer. The current service has less than an ideal wait time between trains, or between buses, sorry, but currently, the existing network has allowed me to both access Marietta Square and the Battery from the bus lines near my house. I've ridden the bus regularly. During rush hour, I've found it's filled with people who are in their work uniforms due to the long wait between buses, and many of them I don't think could take the day off to speak here today. For everyone here, I would issue, I would issue a challenge. The next time anyone goes to a Braves game, please ride the Bus 25 or 15 to the game. Notice how many people are riding back home from a long day at work, and how many are going to the game to enjoy themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Daniel Foster.
I live on, I live in Marietta, my name is Daniel Foster, and I am a student at Kennesaw State University. I live right off the Powder Springs Road, and I feel like the Powder Springs Road Trail isn't like the safest, I feel like MSPLST could make it, you know, add more funds to it, and then the Cobb link, I feel like that could be, you know, improved with, you know, MSPLST, so I'm fully in support of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Christine Rosman, although I know not everybody has to say their name when they come up. First of all, I'd like to say, I think there's like, on that ACCG, Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, you might want to reread that one, because there, SPOST is not a ever-ending, never-ending, ongoing, and I think that's kind of misrepresented, and I would like to go ahead and just read part of it, which is from the ACCG. "The county and municipalities agree that each approved SPOST project associated with this agreement shall be completed or substantially completed within five years after the termination of the SPOST." So you have something going for 14 years, and I think that's like manipulating the understanding of ACCG. You might want to check that out, okay? So, also, I wanted to say that I'm not a Hollywood gal, or, you know, follow anything, but I did see an interesting thing with Amber Rose, because she got accosted by TMZ saying, "Hey, you know, like, why are you guys thinking for yourselves now?" And she said, "Well, because we start doing our own research, that's why we're thinking and doing, voting differently now." And that was, she said, "Why is that?" And she goes, "Because we're not getting brainwashed by the left anymore." So I thought that was kind of interesting. Anyway, the reason why I have these signs is because we, the people, aren't allowed to use the AV anymore, and that is really, would like to say, that we are citizens, not peasants. We get to use the AV too. And what's that called? When you can't, when you get your voice taken away? That's called tyranny, isn't it? And so, when you don't let us talk, we don't trust you. And we're looking for representation, we're not looking for dictatorship. And so, when you don't have no voice, no AV, no liberty, so why are other people allowed to use the AV and we're not? Okay? That does not make sense. And again, we're Cobb, not Cuba. And don't forget that the Mama Bears versus Forsyth County, they're looking, I think they might be looking at Cobb County now, because that Institute for Free Speech is aware of what's going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Pamela Reardon.
Too bad we lost the chair. My name is Pamela Reardon. I'm gonna just go like this. I am sick and tired of this government having no transparency. To the people sitting out there, they've been taken, okay? They've been hoodwinked. There's Kabuki Theater going on here. Where do I start? Okay, Bill 930 does not allow trails, and bike trails, okay? It does not allow that. I know the senators who wrote the bill. That bill originally was to take MARTA and extend it all around in between all the contiguous counties around Atlanta, so they could be connected. They have taken this MSPLST, which I think will be, will come out in the legality, but the way you're pushing it now, it's not legal, okay? And all these things, when they were leading up to this for the two years, because people wanted trails, and they wanted bike paths, so now they're leading with that, but it's a false leader, and it's miscommunication, and it's false advertising, people, you don't get any bike trails, okay? You don't. So, that's that. On the Lower Roswell Road, yeah, all the little figures and all the new little data that we got since that Friday meeting makes it look like it's gonna solve a problem of crashes, but the thing that's missing, people, are the 30 businesses. They have not had a voice, even though this board says they have. They have not had a voice, and they are totally against this. They do not want to be like the barbecue lady in, on Wendy Hill, who is the oldest business, restaurant business, in Smyrna, losing her business and going bankrupt. 30 businesses are gonna lose money over the next two years, or the two years of duration on this. This is a useless project, it's a waste of time, it's a waste of money. Just saying. Rainwater, where is the transparency for this? We were supposed to be given a say in the rainwater. I don't know anyone here who has been contacted to give any sort of say on that. UDC, the Unified Development Code, y'all, February is the last time they have updated the website, and it was just a meanest old.
Tom Soffin.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alicia Adams.
Hi, I'm Alicia Adams, and I want to speak from the heart. Transit and mobility is not a partisan issue. It's an issue of we, the people. My statements are not to endorse a SPOST, though. My vision for the future of Cobb County, businesses thrive, individuals thrive, and we have a Cobb County government that keeps us safe with minimal invasion in our own lives and pocketbooks. Why? Because as a single mom, I know what it's like to fight and work really, really hard to make sure that your child has what he needs. And right now, there's a lot of families that can barely make their rent, they can barely make their groceries, and we're asking them to pay additional monies. My vision for Cobb is that single moms and single dads would thrive too, and it wouldn't be about, give more money so that we can have a chance. We gotta consider from a non-myopic view, yes, do I care? Do I care about those in need, the seniors that can't get around? I care about their mobility. I care about the mobility for people, especially with special needs. That's very near and dear to my heart. But we've got to do it in a way that's not invasive, and if we had found it before, why haven't we done it already? We have had opportunities multiple times for mobility SPOST, and not one has been successful, and there's a reason why. And the national trend, international trends for transit has been going down for years. It's not just due to COVID. It's due to work-life balance, it's due to people being able to remote work, it's due to a number of factors that we're not considering. And by the way, if we want to get down to it, Jerika, you're precious, we grew up in the same state, well, for a little while. When you, 20 years ago, did you ever think, as you were running around, going to Audubon Zoo, and Cafe du Monde, and Camilleau Grill, did you ever think that you were gonna grow up and live here and be a Commissioner in Cobb County? We got 30 years of uncertainty and no way out. Now, I bought a house with a 30-year mortgage, and guess what? I was able to sell it and get out of the mortgage. I didn't sell it for that reason, but I could. I implore you, I implore everyone, to really consider whether we are willing to put our children, our future, at stake for 30 years of uncertainty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Burns.
My name is Pat Burns, I'm a member of the Friends of the Concord Covered Bridge Historic District. Toni Morrison, the Nobel Laureate author, once mused, and I'm paraphrasing, "There is no small bench by the side of the road for me to sit to contemplate the enslaved whose lives passed by this location." From these musings, the Toni Morrison Society began to place benches at significant black history locations. Friends of the Historic District have been awarded a Toni Morrison bench, one of only 34 in the world. The bench placement ceremony will be Tuesday, June 18th at 10:00 a.m. We had invited Senator Warnock to be our guest speaker. Unfortunately, the senator's in session, and he sent his regrets, but he, along with Senator Ossoff, are sending their representatives. We are more than honored to have Representative Terry Cummings as our keynote speaker. The Historic District appears to be Cobb County's first recognition of a known formerly enslaved individual, Matilda Ruff. To honor her, the bench placement is on a slip of green space at the Concord Road entrance to the Silver Comet Trail. The greens, the green space will henceforth be known as Matilda's Garden. The Toni Morrison Society, the bench, has a bench, and this is the perfect way to memorialize Matilda Ruff and her children, Calvin, Zaida, and Rhonda. The bench is a strong, black steel. The bench is interpretive. The bench is also interactive with the living. I believe Matilda's rough spirit will grace the ceremony, and in fact, her cabin was directly across the road from the site. In conclusion, I want to thank Cobb Parks for their commitment and work with the Historic District to make this a successful project, along with the Deltas, the AKAs, and the Omegas.
Thank you.
Jill Paduk.
Tracy Stevenson, good morning, almost afternoon. I have a dentist appointment too, but I'll just be late for it. At the end of the day, this whole MSPLST thing, we knew you were gonna pass it from day one, we knew you were gonna put it on the ballot. I think it's great that the people get to vote, because they're gonna vote it down. They voted it down five times at Gwinnett. Y'all are in a race to be, to fail as well. A couple of numbers everybody just needs to pay attention to. MSPLST is so different than SPOST. MSPLST allows that they can use the money to fund the losses. The current budget spends $29 million a year for the current bus system, loses $25 million a year, 86%. This MSPLST, $4 billion, when you add up their project list, only $4 billion out of $11 billion goes to capital expenditures. That's equipment, that's construction, that's hard assets. $7 billion will fund the losses of this project over 30 years. Each one of you, man, woman, and child, in Cobb County, will pay $13,750 over the course of this in sales tax. Think about it. I'm not against transit, I don't think anybody that's against MSPLST is against transit. We're for transit that makes sense and is physically responsible. This thing personifies boondoggle, the word as defined, an unnecessary or wasteful project or activity seeming valid and important. We not saying that it shouldn't be done, we're not saying that some forms shouldn't be done. We're not heartless people that say, "Hey, we don't care about people that don't have cars." What I will say is, I went to the last Transit Advisory Board meeting, and of the nine voters, it was 6 for, 3 against. That's from your handpicked advisory board. All of them, virtually, I may be wrong, it may not be all, but I'm all, I think all of them, but maybe it's the most, had said that they didn't have good data, they didn't trust the data, they didn't like the project list, but in the end of the day, we're gonna vote for it, because we need to get money out here to start doing something. So this project list is a bunch of hooey. We don't know what's gonna happen. We're gonna raise $11 billion, and we're gonna decide how to spend it. We're gonna start with the first $4 billion, we're gonna burn that pretty fast, and then we're gonna spend your other $7 billion to pay for all of the bad decisions we made on the front end. Crazy! But y'all vote for it, and I hope that all y'all that voted for it know that your names, I think, well, two of you are on the ballot in November. So y'all have been pushing it, and you may, you know, be careful, you may get what you wish for. Keep going out there and championing it, because I'm hearing from a ton of people, and believe me, I'm married to a black woman, I have an integrated family, so it's not a black or white issue.
Mr. Stevens, your, Mr. Stevens, Tom Soffin.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeremy McKinnon.
The first thing I want to say is that 100% of the comments from Chairman Cupid in response to this, MSPLST, were used, and I'll use her term here, to dispel the commentary made by people, nothing positive. The second is, I brought this book last time I was here, I was talking about sustainable development. I want to address the next portions, the very next paragraph that I didn't read. Equity as a concept is fundamental to sustainable development. The Bruntland Commission's definition of sustainable development is based on intergenerational equity, development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the future generations to meet their own needs. This is the definition by the Bruntland Report, which created the concept of sustainable development and equity. I'm here to tell you that you are inequitable with a 30-year tax. The commentary today was stacked in favor of biased opinions. At the beginning of the meeting, there were 10. The point of privilege, which I would like to have raised, was an appeal to the chairman, which is a completely valid appeal, not because it's a point of privilege, but because an appeal to the chair is a valid point. I realize I'm not a member here, but also, neither is Drew. Drew raised the point of privilege from this podium and was recognized. I followed his lead. You need to be held accountable to ethical behavior within this governing body. Finally... Finally, disorder is setting into this, this room. It's setting into this commission, and it's not because of people like me. It's because you're not listening. I've come here over months and months of time, asking for representation, asking to speak to you, Sheffield, on a dissenting opinion, and was taken, my phone number was taken by Cupid, and you refused to meet with me. Yes, miss, because I'm not a member of your, of your district. But that's okay. The disorder, the disorder is setting in because of refusal to listen to people who are showing up and doing this the right way. We're coming to you, and you're not listening. You're not listening. And I can't tell what's going to go next, but I can tell you that it's not equitable, it's not orderly, and it's not right.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Hello, my name's Craig Harfoot, and I'd like to say tomorrow is not a given. We don't know if we'll be alive tomorrow. And 30 years for a Sploast, you know, Sploast used to extend beyond the term limit of elected officials. They shouldn't even do that, because if they don't deliver while it's being collected, you know, that's where you got accountability. They can vote you out if you screw it up. But putting something in place for way down the road, you know, everyone's talked of recession, recession, well, it's not going to happen in an election year. That's pretty much a given. It'll happen whoever gets elected next year. And same thing for the county. It'll be 2008, only it's going to be way worse. And what I, you know, and I'm just looking at all the economic stuff, and for houses, you know, to have affordable houses at 7% or 6%, the prices have to be cut in half. And then they would be the same, they would be affordable based on current incomes, period. Because they did it abnormally low, you got it abnormally high reassessments. And, you know, in the last two weeks, two houses on Lower Roswell Road that were rentals, vacated, for, you know, the signs are up. Columns Drive, one of the same realtors, I think it was Shay Amin, has a house for rent. She bought one on Columns Drive, too. And they're knocking down houses around Columns Drive that are $1 million, maybe to build another. But the problem is, they're not selling. Riverside Drive, they've renovated houses, they're not selling. So, you, you know, you're not planning ahead. We don't need a mislabeled Sploast that's called mobility. You don't repair the sidewalks that we can trip and fall on right now. There's bunches of them right on Lower Roswell Road that have cracks, and Indian Hills, where stormwater inverts are, there, there's gaps like this that you could trip and fall. And my wife did on a sidewalk near work, and she hurt her shoulder. And, you know, it impacted her ability to work. So you need an infrastructure Sploast, maybe, but for four years, and see how you can maintain the county, the stormwater, whatever. But what you're doing here is crazy.
Mr. Harfoot, time's up. Last public speaker.
Thank you very much. I think there were a couple of things that I just wanted to get some clarity on before moving. There was a question about AV, and it was my understanding that the commissioners had not made a decision on AV restrictions, so that email is still available for people to email content to, I believe. Is that?
Mr. Cavett will be able to address that, but yeah, during the last, you're talking to the last rules changes? Yes, there were no changes made regarding AV.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. You're welcome to, to just confirm on that.
No, there, there's instructions printed on the door and on the website. If people want to bring anything to show you all, to print it up, and the clerk will distribute it before they're coming.
Okay, thank you. It won't be AV, though. Yeah, we didn't change that.
So the video is still available, for them to come in with the video is still available, we didn't make a decision on that at all. We held that.
Right.
To August.
No, we're, we're asking, we're not taking any presentations from anybody for public comment at this time. I've sent you several emails on that, I'll be glad to forward them back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that, that's not my understanding.
We'll have to.
We did not vote on that.
I know. I thought we were, yeah, okay. And then the second thing, the ACCG template that was brought up, I know ACCG has a lot of templates for different intergovernmental agreements, and the one that was adopted by Cobb for that, for the Sploast was not the one that was templatized in the ACCG booklet, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, well, that brings us into the public address. Commissioner Gamble, you have the floor.
Flag Day is a holiday in the United States that commemorates the adoption of the American flag. Is it, it is observed on June 14th each year. The holiday marks the anniversary of the adoption of the Stars and Stripes as the official flag of the United States by the Second Continental Congress on June 14th, 1777. While it is not a federal holiday, it is celebrated with various activities, including flag raising ceremonies, parades, and educational programs about the history and significance of the American flag. Second of all, Happy Father's Day to all of those this coming Sunday. And lastly, cue the music. Happy birthday, it's a big one, for our deputy county manager, Jimmy Geeson. In lieu of a speech, we won't sing Happy Birthday.
All right, I guess we'll go to Commissioner, well, I'll go.
I'll go, that's fine.
Since it's up. Yeah. All right, from the office, I was just going to reiterate, Happy Birthday, Jimmy. No birthday song, but from the office, Lynn's Corner at Merchant's Walk. Last Friday, our office honored Mr. Cicero Leonard Powell, otherwise known as Lynn, and unveiled Lynn's Corner. We're proud to announce the naming of Lynn's Corner at the corner of Roswell Road and Johnson Ferry Road, where his Chevron station once stood. This tribute recognizes his hard work, kindness, and the positive influence he has had in our community. His customers shared that Lynn's Station was more than just a business, it was a cornerstone of the community. We also want to extend a special thank you to Valvoline for their generous sponsorship of the bench at Lynn's Corner. You can join us in celebrating his legacy and the naming by just visiting. Girl Scouts shout-out. Last week, I had the incredible privilege of speaking at the Girl Scouts of Americas 2024 Product Program Conference. It was an amazing experience, and I got the chance to see the innovative and entrepreneurial spirit of these remarkable young women. Their creative, creativity, dedication, and drive are truly inspiring. A huge thank you to the Girl Scouts organization for nurturing such talent and providing a platform for these young entrepreneurs to shine. Let's continue to support and uplift each other as we strive for a brighter, more inclusive future. From the community, Nellie Mae's, Nellie Mae Rowe's dedication. The Vinings Village Homeowners Association and the Judith Alexander Foundation worked together with the Georgia Historical Society to secure a historical marker as a permanent tribute to Nellie Mae Rowe, a remarkable woman whose art is now exhibited worldwide. The historical marker was unveiled on June 1st at a dedication ceremony and will serve to ensure Nellie Mae Rowe, Nellie Mae Rowe's story is not forgotten. Living relatives of Nellie Mae Rowe took part in the dedication as well. And the historic marker is located in Vinings in front of Hotel Indigo at 2857 Paces Ferry Road, the site where Nellie Mae Rowe lived and created art in her playhouse, as she called it, for 45 years. And PSA, advanced voting is underway. Advanced in-person voting starts today, Monday, June 10th, for the general and nonpartisan runoff election. Three voting locations will be open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, June 10th through the 14th, at the election's main headquarters, East Cobb Government Center, and Ben Robertson Community Center. The May election resulted in two runoffs in the Democratic contest for a U.S. House race in District 14 and the Cobb Commission, District 2. The runoff date is Tuesday, June 18th. Only those who voted using the Democratic ballot in the May 21st race voted nonpartisan or did not cast a ballot are eligible to vote in this runoff. Please visit CobbCounty.org/elections for more information. That concludes my updates. Commissioner Gamble, you have the floor.
Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the DFACS 2024 Foster Youth Graduates, something we look forward to every year. It's a great program, and Lysandra and her staff have done an excellent job. There were approximately 12 youth who graduated from high school or obtained their GED, and one graduate from trade program or college. Thank you for inviting me to enjoy the celebration, and we're proud of all the graduates. In addition to our, to Flag Day, June 14th this Friday, we are also celebrating the U.S. Army's birthday. We, we remember its creation back to 1775. Don't forget, county offices are closed on Wednesday, June 19th, in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. Juneteenth celebrates June 19th, 1865, when the Union Army finally freed the last enslaved African-Americans held in Confederate states. Many Cobb County services are available online at CobbCounty.org, and there'll be lots of celebration on the square this weekend, that Cobb County and the NAACP will be hosting for, in celebration of Juneteenth. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers, brothers, sons, grandpas, and all, I hope you all have a wonderful June 16th Father's Day with your families.
Thank you.
That's two minutes.
Oh, you did great.
Yeah, I'm going to do a little speed reading, I think I may be up to the second here, so we'll get started. The westbound lanes of Riverside Parkway will remain closed for pipeline construction. Traffic has been shifted to the eastbound lanes until July. Also, as a reminder, City View Drive is entirely closed for construction. Access is only available to residents and businesses along City View Drive. This closure will remain in effect until August as we continue our water main replacement project. Seniors, save your spot for an exciting summer. Registration for summer classes begin Monday, June 17th at 9:00 a.m. Choose a variety of exercise and dance classes designed to keep you moving and healthy, or unleash your creativity with art classes. Make new friends in a welcoming and social environment. Classes begin in July, so please be sure to register at any Cobb County senior center or at CobbSeniors.org. Wishing all the amazing dads out there Happy Father's Day. It is a day that we honor and show appreciation for the love, support, and sacrifices of fathers and father figures around the world. It's a day to recognize the vital role they play in our lives, offering guidance, strength, and unconditional love. Your dedication and care make a world of difference, and this Sunday, we celebrate you with gratitude and joy. The Friends of Concord Covered Bridge, as you, as you heard a short while ago, Cobb's, Cobb Parks and the Toni Morrison Society will honor the legacy of Toni Morrison by installing a bench at the Silver Comet Trail. The initiative is part of the Toni Morrison Society Bench by the Road Project, and is dedicated to formerly enslaved and freed persons of Cobb County post-emancipation proclamation. I want to thank Pat Burns, I believe she is still here, and the Friends of Concord Bridge for their determination in securing the Toni Morrison Bench, and also for meeting and walking me through the property and just sharing ideas and recommendations on the best place to place the bench. So I look forward to attending the event. This free event will be located at Concord Road entrance of the Silver Comet Trail on June 18th at 10:00 a.m. Visit Eventbrite.com to register for the event. And finally, Juneteenth, celebrated on June 19th commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans in the United States. It marks the day in 1865, when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of slavery, two years after President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation had officially outlawed slavery. This significant delay in the enforcement of emancipation highlights the complexities and regional disparities in the fight for freedom. There are plenty of events happening around Cobb and this weekend, but you may visit CobbCounty.org to view events, but please note that our offices, again, will be closed on Wednesday, June 19th in observation.
Thank you, commissioners. That concludes our regular business tab, and moving into the ComDeb hearing, I would perceive we would want to come back after eating, and...
I'm flexible.
110? 110? 110 it is, unless Bill, you have any other commentary?
Just whoever's here for the hearing, they're...
Yes.
Come back at 110.
For those that are here for the hearing, do we need to confer?
No.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
We'll, we'll reconvene at 110. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned for now.
Thank you. All right, so we are reconvening after our recess for lunch. Hopefully everyone's tummy is full as we go on into this hearing, which I will defer to Bill to just kind of open us up on how we move this. But this is to conduct a hearing regarding the application for an alcoholic beverage license for One Stop Spirits doing business as Supreme International Beer, Wine and Spirits.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This case, as you know, has already been before the License Review Board. This was pulled for a hearing by the BOC. Sam Hensley represents the License Review Board and will be presenting the case today. And representing the applicant is Kevin Lef. And I'll let Sam lay out the ground rules for how that works. I was about to ask each side, typically we have 10 minutes for each side. I don't know if that was going to be enough time. You could petition the board if you needed additional time or not. So our presentation should not take more than 10 or 15 minutes.
The presentation won't take more than 10. If there's questions, you can...
Exactly. Very good, thank you. And good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Madam County Manager and Mr. County Attorney. For the record again, I am Sam Hensley, Jr. I am the attorney for the Business License Division of Cobb County. As you mentioned, we are here today on an application for an alcohol license for One Stop Spirits LLC doing business as Supreme International Beer, Wine and Spirits. Mr. Jeremy Barton is the applicant. And this application was originally administratively denied by the Cobb Business License Division due to a distance violation under six dash one twenty-five of the Cobb Alcohol Code, which requires a distance of six hundred... which requires a distance of 600 feet from a public library, church, park, or school. That provision does provide for a waiver of this requirement if certain criteria are met. Specifically, that there would be no adverse effect to the property values of those facilities if the license were granted, and that there would be no adverse effect on the use of those facilities, again, if the license were granted. So there is a procedure, of course, for this board to grant a waiver in those circumstances. In this case, the proposed establishment is within 600 feet of the Iglesia Casa Familiar Church. I believe our evidence will show that's about 416 feet, which is within that 600 feet requirement. This application came before the License Review Board on April the 25th of this year. At that hearing, the License Review Board voted unanimously to recommend the granting of the waiver and therefore the granting of the alcohol permit. As you know, the matter was then pulled by this board for a full hearing, which brings us here today. I will be presenting one witness, Ms. Alicia Webb, Cobb County Business License Division Manager. And Mr. Leff may want to make a brief opening statement. If so, I'll yield the lectern to him. If not, I will go ahead and swear in all of the witnesses at once. I believe there will only be two, and we'll go from there, Madam Vice Chair.
I can just make my presentation all at once if that's okay.
If you're going to be testifying in this hearing or believe you may be testifying, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding? Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. If so, say, "I do." Thank you. You may be seated. I would like to call Alicia Webb.
Good afternoon, Alicia Webb, Cobb County Business License Division, Business License Division Manager.
And thank you for being here, Ms. Webb. Could you briefly describe your place of employment, and well, you've already done that, but your duties as a Business License Division Manager?
Yes, sir. So obviously, we collect occupation taxes, but we also regulate certain business types of businesses, and alcohol establishments are one of them. We are to review the application administratively in my office as well as by the Police Department.
And are you familiar with the application for One Stop Spirits LLC doing business as Supreme International Beer, Wine and Spirits?
Yes, sir.
And how are you familiar with that application?
This application was received in my office in February, reviewed by my office and the Police Department. Ultimately, the application was denied because it does not meet the requirements of six dash one twenty-five of the Cobb County Code of Ordinances. The proposed entrance is less than 600 feet to the property line of the church.
And specifically, what is that distance?
It is... 416 feet.
And to clarify, is this location, which I believe is 1338 Veterans Memorial Highway, building number 200, Mableton, Georgia, 30126, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that located in unincorporated Cobb County?
No, sir. This is now the city of Mableton.
City of Mableton?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So why would the applicant then be applying to Cobb County for an alcohol license?
Until the city of Mableton takes over alcohol regulation and adopts an ordinance to do so, we are responsible for those functions.
Okay. Do you have any knowledge of when that might occur, the city of Mableton taking over those regulatory activities?
No, sir. I know they have until, I think, June of 2025, but I don't know when they plan to do that.
Okay. Do you know if this business has paid its occupation taxes?
I'm guessing not, since the license hasn't been approved.
Okay. But they would not pay those to Cobb County in any event, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Were there any statements, whether written or oral, made to your office in either support or opposition to this application?
No, sir. I didn't receive any opposition or support.
Okay. Were there any other disqualifiers for this applicant receiving an alcohol license?
No, sir.
That's all I have, Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Webb, if I could just, so just confirm the, so the application was...
Mr. Leff, I'm sorry. Can I just keep track of the time? Can you give me one second to switch?
Oh, yes. Okay, I just want to confirm, your office investigated, it properly posted, the application, other than the distance issue was complete and up to code in all other respects, other than the distance question?
Yes. The only reason the application was denied is because the entrance is less than 600 feet from the property line of the church.
Okay. And then Sam identified the church, so I have no other questions for Ms. Webb.
The board may have questions, but I have no other questions for this witness.
Thank you. I will defer to Commissioner Sheffield. This is the inner district.
Thank you. Alicia, you and I have talked a little bit about this before today, but, and perhaps this may be a question that Jessica can also add some insight on. The point was made that this is now within the city limits of Mableton, and you and I kind of cross-referenced that information. And they have until June or May of next year to take over this service. Jessica, I know that there has been some meetings on the backside regarding their timetable, but do you have any information that you can share regarding that question?
And pardon me for interrupting, but did you get sworn in?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yes.
I didn't expect to speak.
That's quite all right. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding? Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. If so, say, "I do."
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Jessica Gwain, Community Development Director. Yes, so as you know, the city of Mableton has already started collecting occupation taxes and issuing business licenses as of the end of last year. At this point, Cobb County is still providing the regulatory licenses, alcohol, health spas, amusement, all of those things. At this point, we do not have a date that we expect the city to start taking on the regulatory licensing function. I've spoken with their city manager. He's not indicated a timeframe for that. So in the meantime, this is still the responsibility of Cobb County.
Right. But at the very least, it would have to be by May of 2020, '25, that two-year window in which they need to take over services?
Right. When that window closes, that's when we expect that they will have needed to take that on.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I don't have any other questions for Jericho, I'm sorry, for Jessica or Alicia, if you guys have any questions for her.
So is this a new application or renewal?
This is a new liquor store.
Okay. So they're not operating yet?
No.
Okay. So we are having all these hearings for the city of Mableton. They're getting the revenue from the occupational tax license?
We are still responsible.
And we're having the hearings and controlling the outcome?
We are still responsible for what regulated licenses are or are not, but they are collecting the occupation taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gable? I didn't know if there was a question being asked on here. Just for clarification, because in the testimony, you said there was no letters received in support or against the application. But in the packet for the LRB Board, which was submitted on March 30th, we have here that the church supports the application?
Yes. That was, when I said we didn't receive any support or objection, I meant by the due date of the time that there's opposition can oppose. That was presented to the License Review Board.
Thank you for the clarification.
What is the concern for this particular application? Besides, I understand the distance requirement, but curious.
Right. Well, and I don't know, Bill...
Yeah, I think we need to go forward with the hearing before we start talking to each other regarding what the issues are.
And regarding the question of abstaining, should we address that now or...
Well, I don't know what it would be for Commissioner Gable, but whenever a new city is formed, whatever, the county has to be able to provide those services for two years as that city does a startup. These aren't the only services we're providing. We're providing police services. We're providing a lot of other services in the city of Maple. They're entitled to those services for a two-year period of time until they tell us they want to start doing those services themselves. Or, as Jackie and I were just talking about, they enter into a intergovernmental agreement with the county for us to provide those services after those two years.
Thank you for the clarity. And apologies, I did, I thought you were pulling your opening into questions, but my mistake. Carry on. If there are no other questions for Alicia.
No, I don't have any further questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That concludes the county's presentation.
Thank you.
I would reserve the right to recall my witness if necessary.
Thank you. And now for the applicant.
All right. And Mr. Leff, there is a timer there on the podium. You probably see it. Okay. How much time do you have left? It's been a long day. I know everybody's probably already to go, so I'll try to keep it relatively brief. So I want to introduce Mr., excuse me, Mr. Barton. Jeremy Barton is the owner, will be proprietor of the business. My name is Kevin Leff. I'm with Sergeant Leff Attorneys, representing Mr. Barton on the alcohol license application. We represented Mr. Barton in front of the License Review Board, as you heard, that approved the waiver request unanimously. Mr. Barton is a 14-year veteran of the Sandy Springs and City of Atlanta Police Departments. He is a, excuse me, allergies are killing me. He is a resident of Cobb County. He is retiring from the police force, and this is his, his dream is to open his own business and be an entrepreneur, live in Cobb County, work in Cobb County. And we think, not just his background as a police officer, but as a resident of the county, we think this would be a wonderful new business for the county. And I think the use, as you will see, as we'll demonstrate in a moment, is fitting with the overall character of the area, the zoning of the area, the way the county has set up this particular area. So as has been said, we're here on the, on the appeal of the denial based on the distance to the church. As the county attorney stated, the way y'all's code sets up any business, whether consumption or package, that wants to sell alcohol that's within 600 feet of a church, is automatically sent through your waiver process, which brings us here today. State law must also be met. State law is a 300-foot distance to a church. That is the minimum. Cobb has another 300 feet added onto that, and then the waiver process. So Mr. Barton's store complies with the state law 300-foot requirement. And then, as Ms. Webb said, we are 416 feet from the church that is kind of catty-corner across the Veterans Memorial. Also, as Ms. Webb said, the application meets all the other requirements for licensing. It's just this one issue. As the county attorney said, there is a two-factor test that the code, section six dash one twenty-five, sets out to see if a waiver is warranted. Will the use adversely affect the use of the church property, and will it affect the value of the church? So as Commissioner stated, there is a, there is a letter of support in the file from the church stating that they support the application, and it shouldn't have a negative effect. I don't know if everybody got that. I have some exhibits. I'd like to pass those out. And enter into the record. And the first, the first exhibit is, you'll see, just in case y'all didn't have it, it sounds like you do. But the first exhibit in the packet is that letter of support from the church across the street. When, soon as Mr. Barton picked this particular location, he went across the street, met his neighbor. Even frankly, before he hired us as counsel, he made the effort to go meet with the pastor of the church and received a letter of support and favor. So, yeah, I think to the question of the use and effect of the use on the church property, you're hearing it from the church itself. They see no negative effect. They're excited about Mr. Barton coming into the neighborhood and support his application and support this waiver. I think that's the most important, you know, to me, that's the most important aspect of this discussion, is that the use itself is in support, the church itself is in support of Mr. Barton's application. I'd also like to say that the granting of the waiver is consistent with the way the License Review Board, this board and the county have treated similar applicants. Our practice, my legal practice is entirely alcohol regulatory. We've filed many, many applications for waivers with the county. I pulled the last four applications we had for distance waivers to churches, and the county granted waivers in each instance. So there is, you know, a long, a long history of the board granting waivers in these instances. I've included in the, I've included in the list of exhibits, I've also included the code sections that are in question here, and then a couple of photos on the back end that we can talk about. The big photo on the back, the big color photo on the back, this is the shopping center. We've labeled where Mr. Barton's store would be and where the church would be. As you can see, you know, Mr. Barton's store is in a, in a large shopping center. There's an auto parts store in there. There's a furniture liquidation store. There's a grocery store. It is very much a retail packaged wine, beer, wine, liquor store. It's very much in character with that type of location. You know, the two uses, the church and the store, are separated by Veterans Memorial Highway, which is a five-lane thoroughfare. I read in the, in some old zoning minutes that, you know, something like 25,000 cars a day progress through there. It's all to say that the nature and character of this area is extremely commercial and appropriate. There are no, in fact, there are no even crosswalks, or you have to go to the edges of this area to even, you know, kind of legally cross the street there. So it's a heavily traveled, very commercial area. You know, it's similar in the area. You have, you have other uses with alcohol licenses. There's a deli in the area. There's a restaurant across the street. The gas station, the Exxon, on the far right of the map, has an alcohol license. So the use as a retail license, I think, is very much in character with that area. I also, if you look at the other color photo that's in the packet, the zoning, I pulled just a snapshot of the zoning to kind of show you. When the county did its last comprehensive plan, you know, this is the zoning makeup that it's created. So you have, you have the general commercial and the NRC districts aligned, you know, kind of all sort of next to each other, all along this corridor. So from a zoning aspect, I think this board and the county has already said that this is an appropriate area for these types of retail uses. In particular, if you, and this is why the code sections are in there, when you look at, if you look at section six dash one twenty-three, which talks about where a retail packaged liquor store would be under the county's alcohol codes, it specifically identifies GC and NRC as compatible, and two areas where a retail liquor store could be. A church is also compatible. So these are all things that the county has already looked at and decided that, you know, they fit into the character of this area, and they all work together. So we don't see any reason why Mr. Barton's store would affect the property values of a highly, highly commercial area. We have included the, the property tax assessments on the church, which have gone up every year in this retail corridor. You can see in there, from 22 to 24, they've increased from 395,000 to 570,000. So the property values keep going up. It's a heavy retail area. We wouldn't expect that to change. You know, our client's business, while, you know, it is a liquor store, it is also, you know, it is the type of... know, it, it is the type of place that has, you know, it's, it's individual shoppers buying a few items and leaving. It's, it's not the, it's, it's not a superstore in any way. It, it should fit into the character very nicely. It should be, you know, from the street view, it should be indistinguishable from the other uses. I mean, you have a, you have a furniture liquidator right behind it, you have a gym, you have a convenience store, grocery store, gas station, and a small retail liquor store fits, fits right in there. As identified in the application, Mr. Barton also has very reasonable operating hours. He's not operating the full length of time that he legally could. He's Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. So he even sort of has restricted hours that he's imposed on himself. So I think that goes to, you know, the, the type of operation that he's going to run. Obviously, I've said, he's a 14-year police officer. You know, he's trained to deal with enforcement. He understands, you know, enforcement of the laws. He's, he's really the sort of perfect applicant for this type of use, in our opinion. You know, I would also say, just to the issue of this, you know, I, we pulled, like, in the last three years, I just would highlight Sidelines Grill at 4719 Lower Roswell Road, The Go Puff at 2211 Roswell Road, The First Watch Restaurant at 1675 Cumberland. These were all, had distance issues to churches where they were waived. That's what I was mentioning earlier. Mr. Barton's been through the RAS training class, he has good systems in place. I think he will be an excellent steward of the license, and we would ask this board to, to grant the waiver as requested. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Would your client be willing to testify?
I'm sorry.
Would your client be willing to testify?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I have a couple of questions. I would just like to hear from him, if that's okay. Then I'll certainly yield to the board. And for the record, Mr. County Attorney and Madam Vice Chair, I have no objection to the documents that were presented going into evidence. I've reviewed those.
Thank you.
Would you please come up to the lectern?
We can all hear you clearly.
You're the county commissioners?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for being here. A couple of things I wanted to clarify. Have you entered into a lease agreement for your store?
Yes.
Okay, so I assume that means then that you're just waiting for the alcohol license in order to open for business?
Yes, sir.
Because this is a package store, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. What would happen if you were not granted an alcohol license by Cobb County?
The lease would get terminated. Also, the money that was spent to hold, to get the property, we would lose that as well.
Okay. And have you researched or approached, or has your attorney guided you through what will be necessary with the city of Mabelton whenever they take on the regulatory services that they're going to provide for alcohol licenses?
As far as them switching over.
Okay, okay. And tell me just a little bit about your career as a, as a police officer, what units you worked in, or what your experiences were.
Okay, so I've been a police officer for 14 years. I started with the city of Atlanta. I did seven years there, went to Sandy Springs for a couple of years, and came back to Atlanta. While in Atlanta, I served on some narcotics units, COPS unit, which is a community, community-oriented policing section, where we went out to senior citizens and city council, and we went to meetings to see what were proposed and what's happening in the future, and kind of relay that to the public. Spent some time doing some licensing permits as well, where we would do undercover operations at grocery stores or liquor, liquor stores, to see if they would sell to underage persons.
So you've actually policed these types of establishments in your career as a police officer?
Yes, sir.
So would it be fair to say that you appreciate and understand the privilege of selling alcohol in Cobb County, and being what I like to say, the last line of defense against people being served or sold alcohol that shouldn't get it, whether it be an underage person, an intoxicated person, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board may have some questions for you as well.
I have a question from Mr. Lef. There was a list of establishments you mentioned just a few minutes ago where waivers were granted. It sounded like those were restaurants. Would you mind just going through that list again for me?
Oh, yeah.
I heard First Watch on there, and I missed the others.
Yeah, so the, so Sidelines Grill's a restaurant, Go Puff is a retail package store, and First Watch is a restaurant. Your code, your, your distance require, the 600-foot requirement is regardless of, of the type of alcohol use.
No, I understand that, but I just wanted to make the distinction between an operational business, like a restaurant, that may, you know, sell alcohol.
Correct, yeah. So there's two, yeah, two restaurants and one, and one retail package.
Versus a standalone retail package store, thank you.
Yeah, that was the, The Go Puff is retail package.
Okay, all right. And just for the applicant, you mentioned that you entered into a lease agreement. I, I'm assuming you might not have been aware of the requirements before entering into the lease agreement?
I was aware, but we wanted to get, we didn't want to lose it. It was a perfect location. I loved the location, and I didn't want to lose it. I would rather spend a little bit of money ahead of time to hold it, to see what transpires.
Okay, so then you were aware that there may be a challenge?
Yes, ma'am.
Respect to the distance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we were aware of the distance to the church, which is actually why Mr. Barton went and met with the pastor at the church before he signed the lease.
I see. Okay. All right, thanks. That's all I have.
I know Commissioner Burl had a question, and then we'll go to Gamble.
What is there now?
It's an empty vacant building. It was a dialysis clinic.
Okay, but not anything with alcohol related?
No.
Okay. And there not any other liquor stores, just restaurants that, and a convenience store? There's not any other liquor stores in the vicinity?
No, the...
Because there's a state law that would prohibit?
No, it's, the, the closest liquor store is, is more than a mile, is, it's more than a mile away.
Okay.
Answer your question a little more context. It's right here in the agenda book. There is one that's listed here, but there are several others, or a couple of others that are not listed here. But to your point, it still meets the state requirement, is what I'm hearing that you were asking.
Yeah, if there were any in the, I think it's 1500 feet?
That is the state requirement.
Right. But there was just... That's all I have.
Gamble?
Actually, you answered my question through Commissioner Burl, because it sounds like the building used to be used for dialysis.
Thank you. Okay. I don't have any questions. Okay. Okay, no further questions.
Typically, we allow each side up to two minutes, and make a closing argument, if they'll be able to do that.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, I really don't have anything else that I can add to what we've heard. Again, I think it's an applicant who is appreciative of the responsibilities that I always like to see, certainly, as an attorney for the Business License Division, about the importance of following the rules when selling alcohol. So in this matter, I think we've asked some very cogent questions, and I would just leave this matter into the good judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just echo the county attorney. I think you've got a unique applicant who's trained and perfectly well-suited for this particular occupation. I think you have a, you have a county resident, a veteran police officer who wants to open up his own business in the county. I think it's a win-win all around, so we appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you.
Did you want to add?
Okay.
The church that sent the letter, that's less than 600 feet away?
Just for clarity, who's the question to, so I can...
Either attorney or...
We'll bring Alicia out, if it's, if it's about the letter, maybe.
Does the church own that building, or lease that building where they are?
If it has changed during, from the application time and now, I don't know, but at one point during this process, I do believe it was for sale, so the church doesn't own the property. They occupy the space, but to my knowledge, they haven't purchased it.
They do own it now?
Okay. Okay.
They're listed on the property record, the property tax records.
The church owns that property?
Correct. I don't know if it's for sale.
Now, their property...
It's been for sale.
Can you come up to the podium?
Yeah, let's, let's, thank you, and...
Jeremy might be able to speak a little bit better. Has he explained to me that the, it's been for sale kind of on and off, that they've been, they've been trying to sell the property for...
Hold on, because you're also not at the mic yet.
Right, sorry. The answer, sorry, the answer to the question is they do own, to our knowledge, they do own the property.
Okay.
Their property, the church property.
The church owns the property.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Burl, is there additional clarity you would like to receive from Jeremy on the for sale, not for sale?
Well, he has a lease. I don't know who owns where he's trying to go, but he has a lease, but I'm not, I don't know who owns that property, but my question is, the church, the letter from the church in support, there's comments that it's for sale, but who owns the church property that's supporting this?
To our knowledge, the church owns its own property, and it is not presently for sale. Is, I believe that's correct.
Not presently?
Yeah.
But, yeah, I was going to say, do you want him to add more context to the for-sale component?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so from my understanding, when I was talking to the property owner where my location is, and then when I went to speak to the actual pastor, he said that they did put it up for sale, they were in talks with, to get another building, but that deal fell through because the other buyer, I guess they spent more money on it, so they had to continue to stay where they are now, but it's my belief that they are trying to sell it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for participating.
If I may jump in while he's still here. You mentioned that, you mentioned that the pastor, the deal falling through, was that subsequent to this letter of support? Did the deal fall through after he submitted this letter of support?
No.
Okay.
And I can add to Commissioner Burl's question, other question. The property that Jeremy is leasing is a, is a, is a big commercial, is a commercial real estate LLC that owns the big shopping center.
Shopping center, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then it appears that Commissioner Gamble, you have a question?
Statement.
Okay.
According to the tax assessor's website, Casa Familiar Church does own the property, and interestingly enough, churches are usually nonprofits, but their current tax bill is for $6,916.41.
Yeah, correct, yeah. And that is consistent with the documents that we have in our booklet as well.
Right, that, that's part of the package.
Thank you.
I didn't either.
I don't think churches pay tax.
It's up, it's up to that organization to apply for an exemption, so...
Correct.
And why it wasn't applied for, it's not, I can't answer that.
That may be a separate conversation.
Conversation.
All right. I think we've completed our presentations, closing, and questions to witnesses, so I will now turn things over to you, Commissioner Sheffield, to provide some guidance.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the applicant and his attorney last week. Thank you so much for making time. And Alicia, of course, to you and Bill, for all of you guys' help in navigating through this application. The application, which we heard today, was denied due to not meeting the distance requirement of 600 feet for the church, which is shy of, I think, 184 feet. There was testimony shared that there has been concessions in the past for the county waiving requirements, but I'd like to add that each of those scenarios and each of those applications are different variables for us to consider. So I can't say because it was a church, in that instance, it should be, the waiver should be approved, but not in this instance. So in other words, we look at each application, the variables surrounding that application, because while the application and the request may be similar, there are different things to take into consideration for each of those applications, so it's not always the same, even though the request might be the same. Pastor Julio Diaz of the church submitted a letter of support to grant the distance waiver, which we've all had an opportunity to review. However, it is within the discretion of the board to either grant or deny the distance waiver, and I appreciate the applicant going through the process of initiating the application with the county, and then the follow-up in the appeals process, and now here before the Board of Commissioners. But again, obviously, it is the commissioner at our discretion to waive it based on the waiver, excuse me, the waiver was denied based on Cobb County Section Code 6-126. And while I understand the pastor, the current pastor's support for the waiver, and I, I wish he were here, so I can ask him some follow-up questions regarding the support, particularly since at one point, the property was for sale, and he attempted to sell the property. And while testimony was shared that the letter of support was received after the deal fell through, I would just love the opportunity to really confirm at what point the letter was submitted in, in support. But that's neither here nor there, but it's just something that came to mind as, as I heard the testimony. But as we consider this application, it, it's important to me to consider the future use or the future congregation, because it is currently a church. And although the current pastor provided a waiver of support, that not, might not be an action of a future church. In this scenario, I have to consider any long-term implications, and, you know, the points were well-taken in terms of it being a retail location, the five-lane highway across Veterans Memorial, but it's still less than 600, 600 feet, which is obviously against the, the county code. So in considering the long-term implications, and just making my decisions, decisions that are made now, remains beneficial and aligned to any potential, potential future needs or use of any future church or church members. After reviewing the application and the letter of support from, from the pastor, and the testimony given here today, I am prepared to make a motion. Can I just move it? Just, just, okay, in discussion, that's fine. So I make a motion to uphold the administrative denial of the application for an alcohol beverage license pursuant to Section 6-125, distance requirements from a church.
I will second for discussion.
Yep.
Burl, you can go. Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, Alicia, what was the vote by the LRB to grant the waiver? The distance waiver?
I think it was 5-0.
Unanimous? With, with everybody present, or is that just five?
Five favors were present.
Okay. And then, I thought I had another question. So if this is... So if this is, if this were to be approved today, the license would be good for one year? And then they would have to renew a year from now or calendar year?
They actually have to renew in December.
In December.
So we do not have a probation, but if it was approved today, it would have to be.
Right. So.
Alicia, I'm so sorry if, I'm going to have her at the microphone if we're going to ask some questions.
Sorry.
So our licenses are on a calendar year, January 1 to December 31st. So typically, businesses will make the effort to renew in December, rolling through to the new year. So this license, if approved, would be good until December 31st.
Okay, and we do have the letter of support from the church that's there now.
Yes, ma'am.
We can't say if it's going to be sold or not going to be sold or whatever in from now till the end of the year.
Correct.
But, um, so they would have to renew in December for the next year.
Correct.
And then, um, eventually, it'll be taken over by City of Mableton anyway.
Yes, ma'am, that's the understanding, is that they will take over the regulatory services by the time that they're supposed to, June of 2020.
Okay, so we don't have any, did you have any emails or do we have any opposition, other?
No, ma'am.
From residents or other businesses or anybody?
I didn't receive any opposition to this application.
Okay, did you receive any emails, ma'am?
Well, I have not received emails for this application, but I have received emails, not for this application. I have not received any in opposition. But, you know, with respect to the distance requirements and when the question comes up of whether or not there's support or opposition, that obviously is helpful in terms of the decision-making, but those are not the only factors that at least I take into consideration when I'm asked to make a decision on these type of applications or hearings.
So in my position, there is a deadline, right? We posted the signs notifying the community that an alcohol application is being applied for. And we posted at the property as well as on the building with the deadline for opposition. I didn't receive any opposition to this application during the process and timeline. The opposition should have been submitted and considered. I didn't receive any.
Okay. Well, I don't like to go against the district commissioner, but I don't see why we wouldn't give him a chance till December to see, I mean, he's a former police officer and military and, I don't know.
So.
He's former police, is he military or, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, yeah, just police.
So I just want us all to be clear that should this license be approved today, he will renew for, in December to roll forward to the following year, provided there's no violations, there's no reason for us to address anything. Once it's approved, unless there's reason to take his license away, we cannot do that. So.
Correct.
To your point, December 31st would be the expiration date, but we would have no reasons or grounds not to renew it after that.
Right.
And at some point, yes, ma'am, the City of Mableton will take over that responsibility.
Six months to prove himself. And if he does get violations, it won't get a renewal.
Correct.
Okay.
No, that's fine, and I appreciate the feedback.
Do you want to, go ahead.
Kind of piggybacking off of where this conversation was. So essentially, to the applicant, to the business owners' comments, we have other businesses in the area that do not meet the 600-foot distance requirement, but they were permitted to have a license. What I'm understanding is, once that is given, there is no trigger to have that reconsidered, because then they just automatically get renewed as long as there is not a complaint.
Correct.
Or a violation.
As long as there's no violations, no reason for us to act on the license, it's just a renewal process every year.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't have the exact distance for surveys in front of me, but there are other alcohol establishments in the area.
Yes, and that was, that was brought up. And I guess, you know, that is where I struggle is, you know, yes, it's different boards, it's different commissioners, but this is not something unique that this applicant is asking for.
Now, just for a point of clarification, the areas that were mentioned earlier with the requirement from the church that wasn't in this particular area, is that what you referenced in your comments a short while ago?
No, what, what bothers me is we've given distance waivers before to other businesses that were mentioned in, in the, and I would have to go back and find the list, but in, in the testimony, we were given other business establishments that are in the area that essentially did not meet the distance requirement.
Right, but my point is those establishments are not in this area. I just wanted to make that clear. The establishments that he mentioned earlier are not in this area.
Right, but those establishments still received a license even though they did meet the distance requirements.
Right, and I addressed that in my comments earlier when I communicated that each application is different. So with the three establishments that he mentioned earlier, two were restaurants. And we have granted waivers in the past, I mean, that's why we go through this process, but each one is different. Each application is viewed through a different lens. Even though the request is the same, the outcome may not always be the same, because there are different variables for us to consider. You know, otherwise, we'll get into rubber stamping if we don't give this some thought and consideration for each of the applications that come before us. But I just wanted to, you know, make clear that those establishments that were mentioned earlier are not in this area.
I believe in your packet, there is a survey, it looks like this, I think, and it has the existing establishments. So the closest alcoholic beverage establishment to this business is the Green Room at 1391 Veterans Memorial. Again, I don't have surveys in front of me to tell exactly what the distance was. The one thing I can say is I don't know how long the church has been there, and if these businesses became, you know, came before the church, there may not have been a distance waiver, but I don't have that in front of me, just wanted to point that out. But the Green Room is the closest establishment. There's an Exxon Food Mart with beer, wine, and sundae sales. Moss and J International Food is at 1127 Veterans Memorial, and they hold beer and wine pouring. And then Reed's Deli, which has been there longer than probably before I was born, is at 1338 Veterans Memorial. So I believe they're in the same shopping center. But those are the closest alcohol establishments to this particular tenant space, to this building.
And the former are within a half-mile radius, and I believe the Green Room may be across the street from this establishment or maybe less than a tenth of a mile. It's not very far.
It's pretty close, I think they're within a half-mile radius, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
I also don't like to go against the district commissioner, which is where I'm struggling a little bit on this case. It's just looking at, looking at the facts of this one, it seems pretty straightforward. I can attest that the examples given earlier, that many, there were several that were in District 2, which are very far from this location. But this list does, it is in the area per se that, that does sell. Were, and this might have, should have been a question I should have asked, I guess, but were any of these listed here granted a waiver?
I don't know, I know Reed's Deli was many, many, many years ago, so I didn't have any dealings with any distance waiver that they may or may not have received. I don't think that Moss and J had to have a distance waiver, and I would have to double-check on the Exxon Food Mart and the Green Room, because I'm not sure if either of those received a distance waiver. And if they did, I don't know what the distance was in front of me right this second.
Because I was curious if at the same commercial establishment, there were, there was another location that had a license.
You know what? The Green Room, I did note this, the Green Room, 2020, it looks like it was denied because of the church, and we did issue a distance waiver. And I can pull, you know, look back, but I did it, now that I'm looking through my notes, the Green Room did have a distance waiver in 2020.
Right, and, and I can absolutely appreciate the case-by-case analysis. I just, it's usually to exclude, not necessarily to include, so I'm, as I, I want to support you as a district commissioner, because it's your district. But there's, there is a question of evenness that I have here that I haven't, I just haven't felt like I've hit that threshold that we've been able to satisfy.
And that's, you know, go ahead, Commissioner.
Maybe a question for the attorneys. If, if it automatically renews each year if there are no violations or incidents, can we put a restriction on it? Did it come back to the board?
No.
For renewal? Okay. You're not an attorney.
I'm sorry, I hate to bust up the party.
But she is right. There is a motion that's on, on the floor that has been seconded, so you have to deal with that motion first.
All right, call the question. Now we need a new, the, the, the motion fails, and I guess we have to enter in a new motion?
So I think.
If you announce, yeah.
Three to one with Commissioner Sheffield voting yes, and Commissioner Burrell, Richardson, and Gamble voting no. And the chair absent, thank you. Apologies, y'all. Wasn't expecting this outcome.
And then another motion? Do we have to make a motion to approve? Or does it just automatically get approved without, deny?
This before the board at this point in time was to correct, so now there needs to be another motion before the board.
I understand, I understand, okay. Motion to, to affirm what the LRB, the License Review Board, for them to grant the waiver. Call it a question. Discussion, call it a question, okay. A motion passes three to one with Commissioner Sheffield in opposition and Commissioner Burrell, Richardson, and Gamble in support, and Chairman Cupid absent. And that concludes our hearing for this agenda item. Thank you very much, bye, everybody.